Buenas en hafa de. Thank you all for being here this morning. And right now, the Committee on Health, Tourism, Historic Preservation, Land and Justice is called to order. Today's Thursday, December 5th. The time is 8:08 a.m. Notices for this public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and main media broadcasting outlets on Wednesday, November 27, and Tuesday, December 3. And was notice was also published in the Guam Daily Post on November 27 and December 2, 2019. The agenda items that will be heard today, this is an oversight on the judiciary of Guam with updates on the following. One, orders for release protocol and sharing of critical data with the Department of Corrections. Two, discretion and execution of warrants of arrest and enforcement of release conditions. Three, status of implementation of a sex offender risk assessment prior to release and update on monitoring of sex offenders. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of my colleagues with Senator Talina Nelson to my left and Senator Mary Camacho Torres to my right. Thank you very much, colleagues. I'd also like to thank the Chief Justice Merriman for being here together with our members of the judiciary and your, the judiciary's management team, of course, for attending this morning and providing us with updates on these agenda items. Thank you as well to members of the public who are here or have sent in their input. So the first item of agenda is the orders of release protocol and sharing of critical data with the Department of Corrections. Senators, we senators and the public alike learned of erroneous releases during the past year from the media. In an oversight hearing on the Department of Corrections, we learned of the judiciary's role in providing the Department of Corrections with release orders and that there may have been issues with providing real-time comprehensive information about a prisoner or his multiple cases, which can exacerbate issues of human error that potentially lead to erroneous releases. So we've discussed this with the judiciary, of course, and I think they have also discussed it with the Department of Corrections. So we're here to hear an update on this process. And I've provided for my colleagues the checklist prior to release of prisoners that is used by the Department of Corrections. And so we'll be discussing this in detail in a little while, but first I, so I'd like to, if you could introduce your team, Mr. Lozama.
Hi, good morning, John Lozama, Administrator of the Courts.
Attorney Danielle Rosetti, Superior Court Clerk of Court.
Troy Pangolin, Marshal of the Courts.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, so first I'd like, if you could explain for the, for the public, the process of providing the Department of Corrections with release orders, including official service. How is that done?
So just for your information, there, the Clerk of Court, Ms. Danielle Rosetti, will present how release orders are processed in the clerk's office. And then the marshal of the court will explain the process for serving release orders on the Department of Corrections. I will advise you that the acting director for the Department of Corrections has requested for a meeting with myself, the Chief Justice, and the marshal of the court. And that meeting is scheduled for tomorrow. So we did meet with the previous director, the acting deputy director, and we went over some of the processes that, that they're using and we explained our process. So we're going to be meeting with the acting director tomorrow as well to go over those same things so that he's aware of what previously was, had transpired in those meetings. So we'll first start with the Clerk of Court on explaining how release orders are processed in the clerk's office.
All right, thank you. Danielle, if you could just put the microphone very close. And also, I'd like to acknowledge the presence of Senator James Moreland. Thank you.
Good morning, senators. As criminal cases are filed with the Superior Court of Guam and a judge makes a decision whether to release or detain a defendant, if a decision to release a defendant is made by the judge at a hearing, the judge then signs off on what is called a release order. It is a court document that is, that identifies the defendant and instructs that the defendant be released. The release order is a court form that is then processed by a clerk. And once processed and certified by a clerk, it is then entered into our judiciary's case management system and passed on to the Marshals Division for Service to Department of Corrections. Once it's served on the Department of Corrections, then the DOC then provides their procedures for how to release a defendant. And the senator alluded to earlier about instances where, there were instances where detainees or may have been released inadvertently. Now, it's important to understand that as cases are filed, they are filed as their charges are brought before the prosecutor at the Attorney General's Office. The court has jurisdiction once a criminal complaint is filed and as the defendant is identified and named, if a defendant has one name on the court document or the criminal complaint, that is how the information is entered into the judiciary's case management system and that is how the case ensues throughout the life of, the life cycle of the criminal case. If a defendant has multiple names and the multiple names are identified on the initial charging document that comes from the office of the Attorney General Prosecutor's Office, that again is how the case will proceed throughout the life cycle. Now, in some instances, we learn through research or maybe from our pre-trial service officer's investigation that a defendant may have more than one name. And I think that the, the issue is it's, if, if there are multiple names for a defendant, many aliases, some have 20 names, you're going to run into issues as to whether or not we, the release order as served on Department of Corrections, how do they proceed with that? So we follow how the case is filed with the court based on how the Attorney General's Office intends to bring the criminal case to the court and from there, that's how it proceeds.
And now the marshal of the court will explain the process for serving the release orders on the Department of Corrections.
Once the marshal's office receives the documents from the clerk's office, we have an ongoing agreement with the prior, the former director of the Department of Corrections to serve all court documents related to, to documents for DOC directly to the director's office from the hours of 8 a.m. to 5 p.m. on weekdays. Anything outside of those hours or on weekends, we would serve to the DOC's hub at the Agania Detention Facility. We do have an ongoing working relationship with the folks over at DOC regarding the verification of active warrants through the VCCH system. I would also like to note that through that system, you cannot view any type of court release orders or commitment orders on that system. So right now, we are collaborating with them to just verify whether or not there are any active warrants to possibly hold that defendant back and not be released. So far, since October 1st, we've been working with them and we, to date, received almost 100 calls from them, you know, so that working relationship is, is good. That's all.
What systems does the court, the judiciary use to keep track of the confinement or release status of a defendant?
So if a judge orders a defendant to release in a criminal case, the information, once the release order or the commitment order is processed by a deputized clerk, the information is entered into the judiciary's case management system called Justware that we use. And so if the marshals and anybody that has access to our case management system are probation officers, the judge will, will, can view whether or not a defendant is detained or confined. And that's what we utilize internally for.
All right, so at the oversight hearing with Department of Corrections, they showed us their checklist prior to releasing of a prisoner. And they were supposed to, or their, this checklist mandates them to review the AS400 system, the HDF database system, the VCCH system, to verify that the prisoner has no pending cases or detainers, or detainment orders, I guess. But these are not the same systems as what the judiciary is using. And as the chief marshal just explained, the VCCH system, which you have a very good working relationship with DOC on this system between the court and DOC, however, this system also doesn't include detainment orders or confinement orders. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, so. How does the court keep track of whether multiple names or multiple aliases apply to one defendant? If, I've also provided with my colleagues the sample orders of release, I mean, yes, from the courts, from the judiciary that was provided to us by Chief Justice Merriman. And so how, does that order, doesn't seem to indicate any multiple aliases or even other case numbers that might be, that might affect that same defendant? So how, how is it that the court keeps track of those types of things?
So if the court learns that a defendant has multiple aliases, then in the release order form that you have, so for example, if it was, you know, People versus Donald Duck as the named defendant, and we later learned that Donald Duck is, is also known as Mickey Mouse, in the case caption and in the court order that is issued by the judge, we would relate the names and include all the aliases of the defendant that was originally charged as Donald Duck. And from there, that information is entered into our system so we can determine whether or not there are multiple cases for a defendant and whether or not the defendant has multiple names. And that, that's how we do it internally. And when we serve the release order onto the Department of Corrections, all the aliases, assuming the court is aware of the names of the, the multiple names of a defendant, is provided to the Department of Corrections.
All right, and that would be on your Justware system?
Correct.
Correct. All right, now, does the Department of Corrections have access to the Justware system?
They don't, but when we met with the prior acting director and her team, it was our understanding that what they do with their release orders upon service by the marshals is that they then enter that information to, I want to say it's Navaline, a system that they have up there. And that's their internal, perhaps what they call a case management system where they enter information as to a detainee.
All right, but it would be then up to the Department of Corrections to determine whether this release order in this single case, how it interplays with a confinement order in a separate case. And, and I guess since that oversight hearing with the Department of Corrections, the chief marshal, you've implemented a system where they can call you and they've been doing that to verify whether this release order, whether there are any other conflicting confinement orders? Is that correct?
The thing about it is that their calls are mainly VCCH questions. I inquired with my staff at our NCIC unit and they haven't been inquiring about release orders or commitment orders. It's mainly just questions about warrants that may be open.
All right. The warrants, so they're checking whether there are outstanding warrants?
Correct.
They can use the VCCH system to do that, but they can't stick, they can't verify whether there are existing confinement orders in a separate case?
I mean, if they ask us the question, then we would, we would answer it.
You'd have to, they'd have to do that by phone call right now because the system that they're using doesn't verify that unless they've kept a perfectly accurate system in-house.
The same way they would have been served a release order is the same way they would have been served a commitment order.
Right. So you're relying on the Department of Correction or they're relying on, they were going to manually input that into their system and then rely on their system to determine whether there are existing, other existing confinement orders prior to release? All right, is it, is there any other, I had asked if there was any other way that the judiciary could implement a, you know, that, that the verification could be done at the judiciary's end because I feel like the judiciary are the experts in this, you know, you have those resources available to you. And, you know, we, we have the judges who could interpret whether these are the same cases or not, or same persons as opposed to someone at the Department of Corrections. But, and so we had discussed several different ways to do that. And one was on the, on the release order to itself, whether the courts could verify whether there was any other outstanding commitment order that might affect this same defendant to put the Department of Corrections on notice. I think the second idea that we discussed was sharing, of course, Justware access with Department of Corrections so they could, if, if they're expected to search for other confinement orders themselves or some limited access, or to put the release and confinement orders on the VCCH system, which they're learning and they're, they have access to now. So could I ask if any of those has, are you considering any of those or any other implementation of any other procedure that might make it more reliable for, on the Department of Corrections' end?
When we first discussed the issue of perhaps indicating on the release orders multiple or related criminal cases and whether they were detained or confined in those cases, you know, one of the challenges we have and, and that we also happen to deal with now is unless we know that a defendant has multiple names, if a defendant has multiple cases and one judge is entertaining that case and determines to release the defendant and at the same time another judge is issuing another order for the same defendant in another case, in another criminal case, at the same time multiple party, people are working on the case. And, you know, we could tell DOC today, this defendant's released and then a judge tomorrow issues a commitment order because there was a violation that was filed. So it, it seems too cumbersome for us to even, for the judiciary to be exposed to that liability to say, well, the release order that the marshal just served last night says the magistrate judge ordered him released, but this defendant had a prior criminal case and the judge that is assigned to that case, because a violation was filed, wanted maybe the defendant committed. So it's kind of difficult for us to kind of streamline that process and, and make sure that the information that is provided to the Department of Corrections is accurate. One of the, I, we foresee as the, the main problems is at the beginning of the criminal justice process, when a defendant is first arrested and booked and confined, there's a process for the Guam Police Department in their system and as to how a person is identified through their AFIS fingerprinting system and the LifeScan system. That, you know, once a defendant is fingerprinted, all the information as to the aliases is provided. And we understand that from there, once they turn the custody over to the Department of Corrections before the, to, before the prosecutor makes a determination of whether they're going to magistrate the defendant, they just turn over the, the Guam Police Department just turns over the arrest record. And so I, as we get it daily from, from DOC, the overnight listing, the multiple aliases that perhaps the Guam Police Department has access to in their AFIS system is not then shared with DOC. And so when the Attorney General decides they want to prosecute Donald Duck, and we don't know that Donald Duck is also known as Mickey Mouse, the case is filed as People versus Donald Duck, and that's what we go with. That's the, that's where the process starts with the court. We entertain jurisdiction as the case is filed. And unless we learn later that a defendant has multiple names or through our own research because maybe this defendant has a prior case, then that's how we proceed internally.
So have you discussed this with the Guam Police Department or the Attorney General's Office? Is there a way? We're trying to, of course, get to the bottom of inadvertent releases and to prevent as many as we can. And so I appreciate your efforts, but is there, have you attempted to implement a system with the Guam Police Department who is, has access to AFIS, you're saying, and could, I guess, identify all these multiple release, multiple names as, you know?
Senator, if I may, so through our Criminal Justice Automation Commission, our CJAC Commission, the efforts to have computer systems assigned at the Department of Corrections specifically for AFIS access, the Automated Fingerprint Information System, that has been identified by the Bureau of Statistics and Planning earmarking $100,000 to provide DOC with the AFIS system and access to AFIS. In addition, what we've talked about with the previous director and the acting deputy director is to share some of the information that we have through our Probation Services Division regarding case names and aliases. That's one of the recommendations and one of the talking points for our meeting with the acting director tomorrow to advise him that we can provide that to the Department of Corrections. It would involve DOC personnel entering that information into their, their case management system, Navaline, and that would make it easier. When you have an individual who is working on whether or not, a corrections officer working on whether or not a person's to be released and they have to go through their case management system, the AS400 and, and, and other systems, that is time-consuming. So we want to make sure that their existing case management system has all the information because it does have the capability, my understanding, I've been informed, that it does have the capability to bring up the individual's picture, the detainee's picture or the inmate's picture, and list all the aliases on that. So our intent is to provide that information to the Department of Corrections so they, they can input that into their case management system so they'll have all the information needed.
But if you have all that information available to you at the judiciary, why can't it be included on a detain, a release order or a confinement order as well?
Not all, as previously stated, not all of the aliases are on the magistrate's complaint unless it's identified. And so if Donald Duck is charged as Donald Duck, he's really Mickey Mouse, but we have, there's no indication, there's no alias of Mickey Mouse on that charging document, then we wouldn't know.
But I thought you said you were going to share that information that you have now with?
For existing cases that were for the same defendant, the same detainee, the same inmate. So we do have some information that we are going to share with DOC.
That information right there that you're going to share with DOC, can we put that information in the, as opposed to, DOC, we all have heard in the news, it's very short-staffed. They're, they're having many challenges up there right now. And I was looking for a way that the judiciary could make it easier for them as opposed to, yeah, putting an additional burden on them to input information and, and research and kind of make a legal determination that this, this alias is this case and this, this other case, those are the same people. I was wondering if that could be done at the judiciary's end. And I thought that that was our goal, to get any kind of determination made at the judiciary's end as to whether these are the same people. You have all the access, as she said, with the CJAC AFIS, right, as to the identifications of these persons. And just to make that step easier for the Department of Corrections, you know, we're trying to avoid error, human error, inputting error, reading it the wrong way error. So the more, you know, protections against error, I guess, so that's, that's what I'm looking for, is that?
And I think perhaps when we talk about this, there are multiple law enforcement systems that interplay with how we handle criminal cases and maybe perhaps there is no perfect system because when you talk about error, entry and error by the, you know, by staff at DOC, well, what about the entry and error by staff at the judiciary, you know, to, to allow, to require us to then on every release order indicate all the aliases to the extent that we know the aliases, all the related case numbers, the status of whether the defendant is detained, confined, and all those other cases? Then, then you shift the, the risk to the judiciary to say, you know, but you said he was released and we released him, but he was detained. But again, it goes back to at the start of the criminal justice process, when a defendant is first brought in by, arrested and booked. And I think that's where we need to address the issue of, with, as the AOC mentioned, if, if DOC has access to AFIS and, and with the prosecutor, with the chief prosecutor, as you get that information, or do you get that information from the Guam Police Department when you make a determination of whether you're going to charge a defendant? So if a defendant is going to be charged with a criminal complaint after being held overnight, what information do you have at your fingertips to, to bring the case forward to the judiciary? Because as we get the case filed, that's how we proceed.
All right, so currently, there's no relationship with the Guam Police Department to require them to do that? That's what you're reporting?
To share the information with Department of Corrections? We don't believe they share that information.
What about, is the, does the judiciary have access to AFIS? AFIS, if you could just tell us again what that is? It's the Fingerprinting Identification System?
AFIS is the Automated Fingerprint Identification System. It's a federal fingerprint identification system and it, it is connected to our NCIC where information can be extracted upon an individual being fingerprinted.
All right, and I understand that in a perfect system, Department of Corrections, they can do this and they're very capable of doing it, but when they're short-staffed is, is my concern here. So that's why we were trying to engage the judiciary of doing those things on their end. What about putting this information, if you have access, do you have access to AFIS? Sorry, I didn't hear the answer to that question.
Yes, we do. And also the Guam Police Department has access and over at their crime lab and their booking area and their records and ID area.
All right. Is it possible to put that information on the VCCH system, which the judiciary shares with the Department of Corrections right now? Or at least to put all release or confinement orders on the VCCH system?
No, it's not. Let me have one of our MIS representatives explain the process and if I can call Mr. Gomindia, but Mr. Mannan?
Hi, good morning. I am Robert Gomindia from the MIS. The VCCH is a virtual criminal history. It only looks up warrants and arrest records from the Guam Police Department. It's only localized to Guam. You hear about NCIC, which is the stateside, Interpol and all the others. So no, the VCCH does not have access to those records or to the alias unless you, you go and you hit each individual's name. Because if they were arrested, it puts it as Donald Duck. And then he comes in and gets arrested tomorrow and he uses Mickey Mouse. You have to use each individual record.
You're describing, Mr. Gomindia, thank you, you're describing the current system, but is it possible to add additional information onto that system?
Right now, no, it's going to cost a lot of money to do because that was written just for the warrant and the criminal history. So if we do it, we have to go back to the vendor and we don't know how much they're going to charge us to.
We've been discussing this for at least a month now, though, and we have no estimates at this time?
No, we, we don't have an estimate regarding that because we are looking at, as I have previously stated, other ways in which we can provide DOC with the information, sharing the information, one of which was the information from probation to provide them with the name, the case, and the aliases that probation is aware of. And looking at what, the information that can be provided by the marshals via telephone. So that's what we're looking at, Senator. Moving forward, if the intent is to see if VCH can do it, yes, we can reach out to the vendor and get, and get a quote for that. That's a shared cost and that'll be shared amongst all the agencies that utilize the VCCH.
He, so he's saying? He, so, he's saying there's no estimate of the cost at this point to add release orders and confinement orders onto the VCCH system, right?
No.
And, and that there's no arrangement right now for GPD to share AFIS information, but you're trying to share the AFIS information from the court to DOC? No.
Through the CJAC Commission, the Bureau...
Oh, you're going to give them a computer?
We're going to give them af, access to AFIS.
Direct access to AFIS.
Right.
So, they're going to have to look up all those things, all right?
Yes.
All right, and I understand this, but again, if, if you watch this oversight hearing with the Department of Corrections and have been following the news, they are very understaffed, and I just feel like for them to have to, you know, search through these additional databases when the court also has access to these. What is the, what is, I know, Danielle, you said, including all the other aliases or the other case numbers of this defendant on a release order, you know, might not show what happens the next day by another judge, but it could show at a certain point in time. Couldn't, I mean, the judiciary has information at all points in time, right? They could, at the release, at the point in time when that release order is being made, it could show the status of all other cases.
It could, assuming the judiciary has that information.
How would it not have a confinement order or other release order information?
So, as, as the commitment order and the release orders are processed, they're processed as they're signed by any individual judge. So, the timing of it would be, you know, the critical factor. When a release order is processed today, and then two days later, a commitment is ordered, is processed for another case, and then another release order, now, there is indication that the judge will know that the defendant is detained, or I'm releasing you in this case. Because we know, based on our record, that whether a defendant has multiple criminal cases, we can tell, you know, the judge that's presiding over the single case will make a determination on whether to release the defendant and identify that I'm only releasing you in this case. And it's up to the judge in the other case to keep you, you know, whether to release you or not because they committed you. So, that information, we do know. Now, you're saying, can we provide that information on a piece of paper when we serve it to DOC?
Yes.
Is what you're asking the court to do now? We are also extremely short-staffed. So, I think to then change up our process to include additional work that we then have to go through the tedious process of determining, did we get all the aliases for this defendant? What if in one case it was, it was not identified, or what if we don't know all the aliases? You're then asking us to take on the responsibility of making sure that another agency then, you know, determines, well, they're just going to rely on the piece of paper and not rely on their process to release a defendant because then it means, well, what the judiciary put on their release order, it's set in stone because at the bottom of the release order, it says, this defendant has five criminal cases, he's detained in two, released in three, and so what do we do now? Well, this release order says we can release him. So, it's, it sounds very simple when you ask us to just place information on a release order, but internally, just amongst ourselves, when we have to work with our marshals division, and we have to work with DOC, and we have to work with our clerks and the judges in processing release orders, it's a diff, you know, it becomes a little bit more difficult than just putting information on the, on the court document.
All right, we're talking about, I just want to clarify, so, we have a release order, and it shows one, one case. In this case, you're ordered, released. There may be confinement orders in five other cases that says, in these five other cases, you're ordered confined. This is the exact scenario that the Department of Corrections explained to us, that they actually have no way right now to determine whether there are outstanding orders of confinement except they're, you know, whether they had received that paper and they had inputted it correctly into a system. But the systems that they list here don't include that. And, and isn't that a matter of just the clerk's office at the judiciary determining, if you know, and of course, if you don't know, if you, if the judiciary doesn't know information, I'm just trying to figure out how you expect the Department of Corrections to, to get this information. They don't have access to AFIS right now, they don't have access to, to, you know, the JustWare right now, and they're relying on an HV, I mean, VCCH system that only indicates warrants of arrest, not confinement orders. And that's where the error is, and so, if, if, yes, I have asked the judiciary to look at putting on all release orders, the case numbers for this same individual so that then the Department of Corrections at least has put on notice there are other cases, and they can go and determine what is the status or refer to their systems, or call the, the chief marshal, but I just, I just think that would be an extra step to help them to be put on notice that there are more cases for this one individual.
I, I think the Department of Corrections, when we did meet with them, they do have information that they enter into their case management system called Navaline, and they're able to upload the documents that we serve, the commitment orders and the release orders. So, they have that information, and when they get the court documents, they're entering that information into their system, which they can as part of their checklist, I understand, then take a look at to determine whether to release a defendant. The challenge that we experience and perhaps that they probably alluded to is when a defendant has multiple aliases. And again, we go back to the beginning. If a defendant is charged properly and identified properly, then perhaps throughout the life cycle of the case, once the, when the commitment order or the release order goes up to DOC, it will show the multiple aliases of a defendant. And I, and then they'd be able to identify how many other cases a defendant may or may not have. So, it, it starts at the front end of when a case is filed. That's where, that's where we see a lot of our, our issues is how a defendant is named on the court document, and then we later learn defendant's name changed.
And you learn that through the AFIS system, is that correct?
Not necessarily, well, we don't check, I mean, when the magistrate's complaint is filed, it's filed as, as the prosecutor brings it to the court. And it's when the, perhaps maybe when a pre-trial off, probation officer goes to lockup to interview a detainee, the detainee's telling them they have a different name, so, than what, what they were arrested as, so that's where, and then it's how the case is charged. So, we don't check AFIS when the magistrate's complaint is filed to see, does this defendant have 50 aliases? It's as the case was charged and based on what internal research we can do, but at the front end of the case, we don't always know that information.
All right, so, your, your solution is that the Guam Police Department should be ordered to put all the aliases on its documents, its police report that it submits to the Attorney General's office, and the Attorney General should include all the aliases when it charges the case so that the judiciary would have all the aliases available to it, and then the Department of Corrections will have all the aliases available to it. I, I can see that as a solution, but it seems, again, like, if this information is available to the judiciary, I can't see why the judiciary can't help to consolidate these, this type of information for the rest of the agencies. Mr. Chief Marshal, were you, did you want to say something?
I'm just listening in. You know, I think from this point forward, there should be a collaborative effort between the Department of Corrections and the Guam Police Department, and we're going to make that recommendation when we meet with the, the new director this Friday, to centralize the booking station. So, when a GPD officer makes an arrest and runs the fingerprints through the AFIS system, all the aliases will pop up for that arrestee, and then Department of Correction officers should be present, probably in the same booking room if possible, to note down all these different aliases which show as a result of the fingerprint check. And then, all that information should be included at that initial stage, and then by the time it gets to the judiciary, our records will also be complete. And so, if that process doesn't happen, sometimes individuals who are arrested under their alias and not their real name are processed through our system under that alias, and so they may be confined on several cases under their real name, but on their alias released, and so that's where the confusion is.
Right, and I was asking whether that could be caught at the judiciary's level as well to help the Department of Corrections to prevent, it's really to help our community.
Right.
But I, I understand, that's where you are right now.
Yeah, we can provide training, and we, we have been actually too with the VCCH.
The VCCH doesn't show any of that?
Correct, and I'm just saying, we can also provide training in those areas so the other agencies can, you know, be up to speed.
I'm just looking for more checks and balances, right? More assistance, so, one agency helping each other. But, all right, there were some questions. I'd like to recognize the presence of Senator Sabina Perez, thank you, Senator, and Senator Mary Torres, and then Senator Talina Nelson.
Thank you very much for presenting the information this morning. Attorney Rosetti, I want to go back to what you described as the beginning, this whole notion of multiple names, of the same person with multiple names having various cases with different judges, and also the AFIS system is how that's the one tie-in to establish who this person with multiple aliases is. My question is, I'm trying to, to get a handle on how it is in our legal system, as I understand it, where you are born with a name, you are recorded in vital statistics with a name, at such time during your life that your name changes, either through a legal name change or an adoption proceeding, or a marital arrangement, your name changes, and that, again, becomes recorded in vital statistics. How is it in our society that we have a situation where a person can assume so many aliases in our community and perhaps different social security numbers to, to correspond? I don't understand how a person, how this even is possible in our system where a person can just assume so many different names and be arrested and charged and recorded in the court system under various names. Can you just, can you just explain how that's even possible? Because I, I know that in my lifetime, anytime there was a name change affected, it involved either the legal system or it involved vital statistics with public health, an official government function. So, how is it that we even arrive at this situation?
Senators, I think we need to understand the history of AFIS. My understanding is, over the last 20 years, 19, 20 years we've been using, been able to have access to AFIS. AFIS also requires the, the community, the law enforcement community to enter the information from the old fingerprint cards that, that the Guam Police Department maintains or the crime lab maintains. So, those have to be scanned into AFIS to have a record, an AFIS identification, a CIT number, state ID number. But, over the course of the last 10, 20 years, if that initial fingerprint wasn't scanned in, if the state identification number wasn't issued at that time, then yes, an individual who has been arrested several times over the last 10 years could have multiple names because when they get arrested, they say they're Donald Duck. They don't have an ID card.
So, they don't have an ID card, so they present themselves as a person, and then that becomes their identity?
Correct.
And that's what happens. So, when, you mentioned that a person, so every person that is arrested gets fingerprinted and that, there is a record of that, whether it's a hard copy, print onto a piece of paper or a scan, correct? Every single person has a fingerprint?
Correct.
That's accessible?
Now, it's a scan. Before, it was a fingerprint card.
Right.
An actual blue card or a red card if you're arrested. Now, it's a live scan.
So, the root of the problem is people don't have identifications. Is that, is that the underlying problem here? Where these people who are being picked up and charged do not have valid IDs or, or there's no source to determine that, that, that they are attached to a valid, valid ID that's recorded somewhere?
Correct.
I, I just, I, I find it incredible that we have such a population or a large number of people that, in our system, that are unaccounted for. But that, that is what we're talking about then?
Yes, that is what we're talking about because if you don't have a, an ID card and you commit a crime and you're arrested by the Guam Police Department, they're going to ask you your name. You're going to give a name, and they're going to hold you unless they can properly identify you through AFIS. But, as we explained, if you are Donald Duck and you give the name of Mickey Mouse, the charging agency, the Guam Police Department is, is arresting you under Mickey Mouse.
Is this problem a general problem? Is it, is it anybody on Guam, of any race on Guam, in various ages on Guam, or is it specific to a transient population or a migrant population?
I don't know. I apologize, Senator, but I don't know the, that answer, whether or not it's...
Well, I, I ask that because I think it's valid. I think if you are, if you are from a community and you are at one point born on the island, there should be a record of you, either through public health, the hospitals, some record of you being born and documented and belonging somewhere. So, for this, this whole community of adults to be existing and, and have the opportunity to establish an identity willy-nilly is quite alarming, and I think that that in itself has to be tackled in our, in our society and in our system.
And we, through our criminal justice automation, our CJAC Commission, we are tackling that issue. We're ensuring that the information is uploaded into AFIS. We're sharing the information with the other agencies. We have, every agency has their own case management system, and what we're doing through the Automation Commission is ensuring that the systems can talk to one another, whether or not it's JustWare talking to VCCH, GPD talking to VCCH through their LRM system. We need that, that commission to work together to get all the information in. We still have hard data at the Guam Police Department that needs to be entered and automated, and we're doing the same in the judiciary as well. So, we're making sure that all the information is automated, it's shared. Unfortunately, it is taking time, and I, we're trying our best.
Thank you, but one last point, thank you, Madam Chair. I just believe, Mr. Lozama, and the panel, I, I feel for your struggles because I, I can see how, how out of control it can get when a person can establish an identity at any point that they desire. That just seems ludicrous in our society where, where there should be an accountability for every person that exists. And we know that the, the AFIS system, the fingerprinted, automatic fingerprinting identification system, is probably the only one guarantee, the biometrics is the only guarantee that can tie one person, one set of fingerprints and biometrics to one person without fail, and that perhaps that's where our investment needs to be made. Because I can't believe or accept that, that, that I could say I am one person today and become that person in your records, in the legal system, and then the next month I can establish another identity. There has to be a way to eliminate that, and I believe that AFIS is the only way, the biometrics. So, you know, I hope that, that, your policies and your procedures seem to be reasonable in terms of what you do, but I believe the, the underlying problem here, as Attorney Rosetti pointed out in the beginning, is multiple aliases, multiple cases, not being able to establish that all these different scenarios tie into one person.
Yes.
And, and I think that that's really what we're, we're struggling with right now, but thank you very much.
Mr. Lozama, could you clarify, whose information is inputted into AFIS? Is, are all law-abiding citizens' information inputted into the AFIS?
No. The information that is entered is those that were previously arrested and charged.
All right, so, it's a, it's a, it's a fingerprints of those who have been arrested. So, if I'm a perfectly law-abiding citizen, never been arrested, and I go in there and I tell you on my first arrest that I'm Donald Duck, you wouldn't have any record of me under... on my first arrest that I'm Donald Duck, you wouldn't have any record of me under any other aliases, or you're not going to check the public health records for my birth certificate? You wouldn't know where to go. Isn't that correct?
So the way it works is you go in, let's say you're a Maricor and you get fingerprinted. We cannot keep... AFIS cannot legally keep those prints because you're not a criminal or been criminalized. So they only keep the criminal records. So like you were saying, if you came in, AFIS is not going to know who you are because you don't have a criminal record.
All right. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. Okay, Senator Nelson, did you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Chief Justice Merriman Hoffa Day. I want to talk about the elephant in the room. And I'm reading from an article on October 30th, 2019. Oh. The mayor here in October 30th, 2019, it's on the Guam Daily Post, it says the mayor recorded saying...
Senator, I'm sorry. If we're going to talk about the warrants of arrest and enforcement of release conditions and the allegations made under this next part of our agenda?
Okay. Then I'll ask another question. So I will withhold my questions. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the next item.
Thank you. Senator Moylan?
I'm not done yet.
Oh, please.
How many individuals... how many individuals are currently detained at DOC by order of the judiciary of Guam? Can you please turn on your mic, sir?
Senator, I'm sorry, but I don't have the daily count with me. I don't know how many are detained as of today.
Can you give me a count from when you were last where?
Last talk was around 250, I believe.
250 detainees at DOC by order of the judiciary of Guam?
Yes.
And what day was that by?
That was a conversation... that was something I looked at about two weeks ago.
Okay. Is there a way that during this oversight hearing, you can get accurate information to include for current... that is current today?
We can get that...
Do you not have an ongoing count? Do you not have an ongoing daily count of detainees that are at DOC?
Yes.
So can we get that information perhaps in like the next 10 or 15 minutes? I see you have a lot of resources. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then also the electronic monitoring program. Last term, we appropriated $500,000 for the electronic monitoring program. And so I was wondering, how far has that moved for implementation?
Senator, again, if we could just stick to this portion, we're just trying to get through this release orders and the information shared with the Department of Corrections. And we can add that on to the end of the agenda, electronic monitoring update. That's okay?
Madam Chair, this is all relevant to everything that you've stated earlier. They're all connected with detainees and discussion of detainees. And so I'm asking them, the judiciary of Guam, how far we've gone with the electronic monitoring program, because some of the issues we are having is related to the release orders and this checklist that Department of Corrections has and the inconsistency of information being shared amongst the agency. And so because I feel that it is relevant, there's people... there are detainees at Department of Corrections by the judiciary of Guam. And there was an electronic monitoring program that was widely discussed last term. And so I'd like to know...
We can get an update on that. But if we could just stick to the release orders, the information shared with the Department of Corrections, if they are on electronic monitoring, we will discuss that. But there... none of those in DOC, that's not applied to them.
Right. But it impacts DOC because it has not been implemented in the electronic... they have not implemented the electronic monitoring program. So that impacts DOC because now they are responsible for... from what... what was said was 250 people about two weeks ago. So may I ask the question, Madam Chair? Or are you trying to tell me not to ask the question?
I'm just trying to get this done in order because we have three items on the agenda I really like to get through. Electronic monitoring, just not contributing to the inadvertent release. But if you could give us a very quick update on the electronic monitoring, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senators. We have had 14 applications for electronic monitoring. We currently have two detainees on electronic monitoring, one of which is a detainee who was charged for CSC. So 14 applications, two currently on the program, one of which is an individual who is charged with CSC.
Thank you. Does the judiciary provide any funding or resource to pay for detainees that are held at DOC?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you, sir.
Are you finished? Senator Nelson, Senator Moylan? Any questions? Senator Perez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a question about updating the system, the CJAC system. Is there a timeline for that to happen regarding making sure that we are... there's an accounting of the prisoner population and identification?
No, Senator, there's no timeline. As we meet monthly, the Guam Police Department provides the chairperson of the CJAC, the updates as to how many... how much information has been uploaded. The Chief Justice, as the chairperson, has requested for that information. What is the total number that is left? And we're still waiting for that information. But we do get updates through our CJAC Commission, the number of records that are uploaded and entered into the system.
Just to kind of reiterate my question as far as real-time data, you had mentioned that the CJAC system is addressing the lack of ensuring that the identity of the person, you know, like earlier it was mentioned that, you know, somebody can identify themselves as Mickey Mouse and then later Donald Duck. But then you said the CJAC system is there to address that problem. So I'm just wondering, what is a timeline for that to occur?
I can't provide the exact timeline, Senator, but I will certainly look into it and get back to you on that.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'm going to move on to Part B of our agenda, which is the discretion and execution of warrants of arrest and enforcement of release conditions. So we learned again from the news that there were allegations regarding the discretion and abuse of power by marshals or former marshals involving the execution of warrants, the custody of detainees while the return of warrant is pending, and the selective enforcement of release conditions. We had sent a letter to the Chief Justice and were sure that they were going to investigate these allegations that were made. And we're talking about in the Mayor Blas case where they name... where they discuss marshals. And so I had asked if you could please... in that... those allegations make it sound like there's discretion by the marshals and who they need to bring in under these warrants. And sometimes they cannot bring them in, or which warrants they're going to go and pursue that day or ignore. And so things like that, that abuse of discretion. So I'd like, if you could discuss, how are these... how are warrants executed? How are they prioritized?
Okay. Senators, what we'll do is the clerk of court will explain the process of the warrants from the clerk's office to assign to the marshal's division. And then the marshal of the court will explain how the warrants are executed. And then we'll make ourselves available for questions.
So again, Senators, when a warrant of arrest is issued in any case, because a warrant could be issued in a non-criminal case, the warrant is signed by a judge and is then processed by a deputized clerk. The information, certified copy, is then provided to the marshal's division. But internally, in our case management system, we send a notification to a clerk in the marshal's division for a warrant. So a deputized clerk will notify the marshal clerk that a warrant was just issued by a judge and needs to be tasked. So for us internally, the tasking mechanism is a way for us to notify the marshal's division that these warrants need to have been issued and need to be executed. Once the clerk from the marshal's division receives the notification in our Justware case management system, the warrants are then tasked to a marshal to serve multiple marshals, depending on the assignment, because all marshals can execute warrants and the marshal of the court will explain that process. But internally, it's... there's a mechanism in place for once the warrant is signed by a judge, processed and certified by a deputized clerk, notification is provided to a clerk in the marshal's division through our case management system. And then in our system, we are then able to assign the execution of the warrants.
So before I get into explaining how deputies prioritize their warrants, I just wanted briefly explain how deputies prioritize all their documents, because deputies are actually responsible for serving other court documents other than warrants. And those documents have timelines. So once the clerk's office assigns the documents to the marshal's division, our clerks then task documents, no matter what they are, summonses, subpoenas, protection orders, warrants of arrest. They task those documents to certain deputy marshals assigned to certain sections. So we have a variety of warrants of arrests, criminal felonies, criminal misdemeanors, your civil warrants, small claim warrants, traffic warrants, restitution warrants. So depending on what type of case it is, then a certain team will be assigned those warrants. Once those warrants are assigned, they are accounted for through our Justware system. So if we ever needed to have an inquiry on a certain case or individual, we can track that through our Justware system. So once a deputy receives our court documents to include warrants of arrests, they will prioritize their caseload based on the timelines. And so warrants of arrest, for the most part, are open-ended. There's no timeline on a warrant. The warrant only ends when it's cleared or a return is filed with the court. And that's when they're arrested. The other documents I mentioned earlier, like court summonses, subpoenas, protection orders, those, or even civil-type warrants, those documents all have timelines. So a deputy will prioritize those documents before they work on a warrant. And that's just because of, you know, like every agency, we have manpower issues as well. And so we prioritize the documents with timelines before warrants of arrest with no timelines. That being said, deputy marshals will serve the documents with the due dates. And how they prioritize the warrants with no due dates depend on whether or not the information on the warrant is current and fresh, with fresh leads provided on the warrant, good addresses provided on the warrant on where the individual lives, or contact information and so forth. So those warrants, although are easier to serve as compared to the warrants with old data on it, it still requires manpower and, you know, field investigations. So man hours dedicated to just one warrant. So warrants that are... we have fresh leads on tend to take priority. Warrants that a judge directly orders our team to go out and execute for whatever reasons occur in the courtroom, we make those priorities. So upon availability of our team, then we execute it as soon as possible. Priority of warrants are sometimes mission-driven. And as I was thinking about this, I thought about how we prioritized traffic warrants in the early 2000s. I can't cite a specific date. And so that was our mission of the time, so we prioritized those warrants. Today, we have what we call the GIVE program, which is Guam's immediate violation enforcement program, which is ran by the probation office. So this is a swift, certain, and fair program. So when a warrant is issued for any of the participants in that program, then we are mandated to provide quick action on those warrants. Not to say that the other warrants are not important, they're all important, it's just that it's a matter of prioritizing our warrants because of our manpower issues. I do want to say that our policy in the marshal's division dictates that not one marshal can go out and execute a warrant of arrest. Every time a warrant of arrest is executed, we have no less than... no less than two, depending on the warrant that we are executing. So a deputy does not go and pick and choose which warrant to go and pursue on his or her own. There's always a team of no less than two deputies when they execute warrants. That's all. Any questions?
All right. Appreciate that information. So just to put this in perspective, how many outstanding criminal warrants of arrest are there?
Give me a minute here.
Just approximately. Or an accurate count, if you could give us one?
We have total... I know I have that number here somewhere. I'm sorry. Okay, we actually have a total of... you mean warrants on hand as of today? Active warrants?
Yes, please.
8,099?
Those are criminal warrants?
Yes.
In terms of, you know, danger to the community, that number sounds alarming from our perspective. But I don't want to speak for all my colleagues, but that... from my perspective, it sounds alarming that there are 8,000 people out there waiting to be picked up for known violations or criminal violations. How many of these are you able to execute, let's say, in the next six months?
It depends. I mean, aside from serving documents, marshals are also mandated to provide security to the judicial center, the main branch, Northern Court, Erica's House, the probation building. And so security takes priority over executing documents.
All right. So we've been told this morning that because of other court processes and judges' orders, criminal warrants, which have no timeline, may be deprioritized compared to warrants that have deadlines or civil timelines and other court documents. Or if a judge says, "Go get this person." And there are 8,000 outstanding. All right. So my question was going to be, and I understand that you discussed the two people going out at the same time, so that there's no abuse of discretion by one person alone. But I was going to ask you, how does the judiciary protect against selective enforcement of release conditions and selective issuance and execution of these warrants of arrests, as has been alleged in the case and seems very possible, you know, based on this type of a structure? But I know... so the two people at the same time, are there any other...
It's no less than two.
Would you say checks and balances? Pardon?
It's no less than two. So there could be more.
Okay. What about supervision? Are they, you know, is... do they report to anyone how many they've executed that day or why they didn't, things like this?
Yes. Each field unit has a supervisor that they report to.
Is there any other measure that you believe would show that the judiciary has... is protecting against selective enforcement?
Well, one way is if it comes to our attention, and I think we provided an answer as to the process as to how we receive complaints from the public. Another way is, like I stated earlier, through our Justware system, if a warrant is... or any document is inputted, then it's... any document is inputted, then it's assigned to a specific deputy. And then if any questions arise regarding a defendant in that case or what have you, there's a way for us to track it, and, um, you know, find out what happened.
Do you have a system that rotates these warrants among different officers?
We do.
So that there's no one officer protecting one person, something like that?
Well, um, you're talking about rotation within the division?
Correct.
Well, we do have, um, rotations yearly, if not longer or sooner, depending on what the situation is. And that's to just ensure the continuity of institutional knowledge within our division. And so when a deputy rotates out of the field section, they'll go on to the security section, then a new deputy will take over their caseload, and so forth.
Doesn't seem to be intentional to prevent abuse?
No, no, it's more to, you know, cross-train.
Meet your operating procedure, operating needs.
Correct.
All right. What is the status of the investigation made in response to the allegations in the Mayor Blas case involving marshals?
With regards to the allegations made against the marshals of the judiciary, we've looked into the matter by way of an internal investigation. We've also met with the Federal Bureau of Investigations. We've had several meetings with them, but we have not been advised of, or informed of any specific investigation regarding any allegation against any of our marshals, our current marshals, or any active employee of the judiciary. So we did do an internal investigation, we did meet with the FBI. We are not aware of any investigation regarding any allegation against any of our marshals. Again.
Were the, um, the identity of the witnesses that were making those allegations, are those known now?
Senator, that is an ongoing case with the District Court of Guam.
Correct.
So, uh, I, I have to caution myself about identifying any individuals that were interviewed by our internal investigators. That's personnel matter, and we want to make sure that it's, it's kept that way, confidential information.
All right. And the reason I ask is because in the news, they've reported that some of the witnesses in that case are identified now, and I was wondering if you could check your, your warrants, if they're, who was assigned to those people, or if it, you know, if it, if you could get information that way, but, you know, I'm not the law investigator here. So I'm gonna pass a question to Senator Nelson, if you have questions.
It almost gives the impression that I'm the law investigator after that comment. Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief Marshal, you mentioned various warrant types, and so can you go through each warrant category and describe what each category is? You mentioned like about four or five categories for warrants?
As far as the difference in just the case itself?
Yes, just to understand it a little better.
Okay, so, so we have grand jury warrants that are issued at times as a result of a grand jury indictment or what have you. Then we have criminal felony warrants, and, is this what you're asking?
Yes.
And so then, criminal felony warrants as a result of a criminal felony case, depending on, I mean, they're mainly issued for failure to appear, whether or not it's a felony or misdemeanor warrant, and what have you.
So it's a failure to appear in court?
To appear in court, or even to, uh, report to probation.
Okay. So it can range from violent felonies?
Yes.
Sexual?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, the way we determine the severity of a warrant, or whether or not it's a high-profile warrant, is through our research and investigation. That's when the deputy marshal will research as to the charges of the defendant on the warrant, but mainly warrants are issued for just failure to appear in general.
Okay. So just, I've only heard to the grand jury indictment warrant category, and then the criminal felony warrants?
Then you have civil warrants and small claims warrants, uh, traffic warrants.
Is that it?
Uh, restitution warrants, which, which are a result of criminal cases and restitution fees that have to be satisfied.
That's all?
Um, that I can recall, yes. There's, I think, a few more, but... Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I knew I was forgetting something. Child support warrants.
Say again?
Uh, child support warrants. That's about it.
Okay. So there's grand jury indictment warrants, criminal felony warrants, civil warrants, traffic warrants, restitution warrants, and child support warrants. So all in all, you have one, two, three, four, six different categories for warrants?
Uh, pretty much, yes.
Okay, so for each category?
Oh, did you say criminal misdemeanors?
No, you didn't tell me criminal misdemeanors.
Oh, okay, yes, I'm sorry. So after criminal felonies, there's criminal, criminal misdemeanors.
So then there's seven categories?
Yes.
For each, are you missing something else?
I'm sorry, yes. Juvenile, um, there's juvenile warrants, but they're not for the juvenile clients themselves, they're for the parents of the juveniles.
So, so Senator, just to explain, a warrant of arrest is issued by a judge could be issued in any case type filed with the court.
Right.
But he's describing instances where we see most warrants issued, so...
So you don't have a specific, like, selection criteria for different types of warrants? Or is it just random, whatever the judge?
If it's a non-criminal warrant, as he was describing, to a civil, small claims, the difference between non-criminal warrants and criminal warrants is a non-criminal warrant usually has an end date. So it expires after, for example, sixty days. So there would be a hearing date for the marshal to go out and say, uh, "Serve the defendant because you have to appear on this date." If it's a criminal warrant, it, it usually results from a violation or a failure to appear. Most warrants are, you failed to appear as the court ordered you to appear, and so therefore I'm issuing this warrant for a marshal or a peace officer. So once the warrant, the criminal warrants are entered into the system, any peace officer can execute that warrant.
Okay.
Um, that is how it is processed through the system, so it depends on the judge who's presiding over the case, but those are the examples of where we see most warrants handled on the criminal than non-criminal.
So, yes, so I was just, the reason why I'm asking this is that, um, I'm thinking that you're telling me that there's eight thousand ninety-nine, um, citizens that have either been involved in domestic violence, some sort of sexual abuse, um, some kind of robbery or theft, some kind of assault. And so I'm putting them in those violent categories to society. Is, is that correct? Eight thousand and ninety-nine individuals that are out running wild with violent charges against them?
That's correct.
Like harm done to another individual?
That's correct.
Are you certain about that?
Eight thousand?
It says, he said, I heard eight thousand ninety-nine criminal warrants?
Yes.
So, I'm ass, I'm saying that what I'm thinking is that there's eight thousand ninety-nine criminal warrants. When I think criminal warrants, I think about violent crimes, sexual assault, um, robbery, theft, domestic violence. And I asked the chief, uh, is that correct? Is, is this interpretation correct? And he said, yes, all eight thousand ninety-nine. So I'm wondering, is, do, are we, do we want to say that that is actually true? Is that actually true?
The, there are over eight thousand warrants, Senators. One of the things, and I have to explain it, when we first converted from our AS400 system to our Just Where system in 2011, some of the older warrants, including traffic warrants, were in the AS400. They were transferred into our Just Where system, our case management system. So when you run a query on Just Where, it shows that that's the total. That is accurate. Now, let's go back to a previous conversation, we were talking about multiple name records, multiple aliases. So an individual could have a warrant of arrest because his name is Mickey Mouse, and he could have another...
Yes, Mr. Lozama, I was gonna get to the next question, but before we move on to that subject?
Yes, I'm sorry.
My question was, I understand that there's eight thousand ninety-nine to date that we were given at this time today. And my question was, are all of these eight thousand ninety-nine warrants all violent warrants? Like, these individuals have done harm to another person in our community? And I'm getting a yes from the chief, and then I'm getting a broad answer from you. Your statement was, "We have over eight thousand warrants."
Correct.
I'm asking if these are violent offenders, if we have eight thousand ninety-nine individuals that are violent offenders?
No.
Okay.
Some of those same warrants, as previously stated by the marshal, are traffic warrants.
Okay.
Traffic warrants. Some of the...
Okay, so there are a mix of categories of these eight thousand ninety-nine warrants?
Yes, Senator.
Because we don't want the public to think that the judiciary is leaving eight thousand ninety-nine criminals that have done harm to the community because of whatever reason or such.
Yes.
And so that's why I'm asking to clarify that. So, these eight thousand ninety-nine warrants fall into various categories of warrants, to include traffic warrants, to include child support warrants, to include restitution warrants, to include civil warrants, grand jury warrants, criminal felony warrants, and juvenile warrants, and criminal misdemeanor warrants, and others to name the few. They're not specifically all violent offenders. Okay. Can I get a yes for that, or a no?
They're not all violent offenders, and some defendants have warrants in multiple cases other than just criminal felony. They may have, in addition to that, a child support or a traffic warrant. We find that quite often where they have several warrants in different cases, which adds to the count. And this count also did not occur overnight. I mean, some of these warrants are over twenty years old. You know, we just haven't vetted through them to dismiss them for whatever reason, but I know Guam's not unique with this. I was reading other jurisdictions too, as well, are facing the same challenges regarding manpower issues, and warrants are just being issued out faster than we can address them. And like I stated earlier, we have other mandates within our division that we have to address as well, aside from serving warrants. And I also stated earlier, warrants are important to us, and we try our best to address it every time we can.
Thank you, Chief Marshal Pangolin. That's a little bit more reassuring than throwing out an eight thousand ninety-nine number.
Right.
And so to the next question that Mr. Lozama brought up was aliases, right? Some of these warrants are also due to the same individual with different aliases as well, for another, a different kind of action or crime. So, in instances, some warrants can be doubled, tripled, or quadrupled with different actions by the same individual.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, Senator, yes.
Thank you. And I'm glad, Chief, that you brought up the issue that these eight thousand ninety-nine individuals with outstanding warrants did not happen overnight. This happened for twenty years. Some of these, the database, the information in the database is as old as twenty years old. And so just to, um, I know you probably don't have these numbers right now, but, um, for the record, Madam Chair, and if I have your approval, I would like to request, um, the warrant count for December 31st, 2015, December 31st, 2016, December 31st, 2017, and December 31st, 2018. It, perhaps not at this time, but if we can have your committee submit that to you for information, Madam Chair.
Just to clarify, Senator, are you asking for the number of warrants that were executed or issued?
Outstanding.
Outstanding.
Thank you. I did want to ask a question in regards to Mayor Jesse Blas, but it has been, um, stated by Mr. Lozama that it is an ongoing investigation, and so I guess we'll just have to wait until the investigation is complete and see whatever information the FBI will allow the public to, for us to release to the public. Thank you.
Could you just clarify, Chief? The eight thousand ninety-nine, how many of those are criminal?
Could I provide that answer to you, along with the stats that Senator Nelson requested? I don't have that breakdown right now.
Okay, because earlier you said that the eight thousand ninety-nine were criminal warrants, outstanding, but now we've been told they include all these other categories?
Right.
So they, they're the miscellaneous, all, all the different categories?
We need, we'll clarify that and provide that to you.
All right. Thank you, appreciate that.
And, and the other members, Senator.
Okay, great.
We did provide some information, Senator, on the October 14th letter with the number of warrants that were, um, executed from January to September, so that should give you some idea of...
Could you just read that part?
Sure. So in our response, we said that from January 1st, 2019, to September 30th, 2019, four thousand one hundred and twenty-seven warrants were served. One thousand two hundred and sixty of them were traffic warrants, a thousand thirty-eight were criminal felony warrants, seven hundred and ninety-nine were criminal misdemeanor warrants, and three hundred and eight were civil warrants.
Served. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Senator Moreland, you had questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Warrants are, is that public information, or, like, if I wanted to know who has a warrant, am I free to find that out?
If it's, if the warrant of arrest was filed and part of the public record in the clerk's office, any individual can come into the, into the clerk's office and take a look at the court record.
Or is there a website that judiciary has with warrants of arrest of, uh, by names of, of people?
We actually have a website, um, Mariana's Law Enforcement website, it's called a Milrin, and that's where the public can provide anonymous tips on individuals with, with warrants.
Is it possible that that could also be published and to assist you folks? If, if you put out a hundred names on, on the newspaper, and please contact this number anonymously if this is your neighbor?
Yes.
I think if I, if my neighbor saw my name there, and, and you're gonna give me a hundred bucks, uh, they'll tell you right away where I'm at.
Correct. With our experience, we used to publish that on KOAM Fugitive Files, I believe it was called, but I can count on one hand how effective that was. I mean, we hardly had any reports, um, by doing that. The Milrin numbers, though, the Mariana Law Enforcement Regional Information Network that we have on the website is actually, it's working out very well for us. We have more anonymous tips and more success in executing warrants with that website.
If somebody was to report that person with a warrant to Crime Stoppers, are they eligible for that? Is it a thousand dollars?
Oh, I'm not sure. Right. I'm on that, Senator.
Mr. Lozama?
I don't believe so. I, I just heard, um, and then when I was driving home yesterday, a Crime Stoppers tip, and it said that if the information is confirmed and the individual is actually arrested and indicted, that's when the individual will, uh, get the, the money. So I don't believe it is.
So, so the first...
For a warrant, no.
So if the person comes in, if they're captured, my neighbor has a warrant, I turn and that, I call Crime Stoppers, and then they pick them up, and it goes through the process, and then that warrant, uh, ends up being an arrest or a incarceration, then that warrant could be given?
Like I said, Senator, I only heard it in the commercial. I think, um, you know, the Guam Police Department is better to address that or answer that response. I just heard that it had, the individual had to be arrested, and there needed to be an indictment. That's what I heard on the radio.
Thank you.
My apologies.
To clarify, I think the Crime Stoppers program is run by the police department and a nonprofit, right? But not by the judiciary at all. All right. So Senator Torres, did you have any questions?
No questions. Just wanted to comment, though, you know, I think we shouldn't get ahead of ourselves because a lot of what we're discussing is arrests and warrants that, that varies different from... from an actual conviction. And so, access to that information, or, you know, making that privilege is probably not in, not a very necessary first step. But what I also wanted to comment is, I think, I'm glad that you were able to clarify the number of 8,000, because it's very startling to think that there are that many arrest warrants out. But I think the main message to that is that it's not a breakdown in the probation or the, or the marshal service, or the judicial system necessarily. I think it's a breakdown in the community. And if anything, that's a wake-up call to how we have to have a morality check as a community, and not put the onus on the judiciary to fix everything, or put the blame on the judiciary for everything that goes wrong in our community. So, you know, I commend all of you for what you do and the challenges that you have, but I think what it highlights is that we've got a huge problem in our community, and owning up to reducing those numbers is not necessarily the burden of the court as much as it is the burden of each citizen to, to do their civic duty, to just be law-abiding and upright citizens. So, I just wanted to make that, that comment in support of, of your efforts.
Senator, please. Please, Chief.
You know, and along those lines, Senator, all peace officers on Guam are authorized to execute a warrant of arrest. It's not just the Marshals' Division.
Again, and that information is available on the VCCH, the Outstanding Warrants of Arrests?
Correct.
So DOC has access, GPD has access?
Yes.
Who else?
The Attorney Generals have access. I believe Airport Police, I have the list here again. Let me just get to my notes.
And, so everyone can see how, I mean, if there's an outstanding arrest?
So we have the AG's Office, GPD, DOC, Guam Airport Police, Customs and Border Patrol, the federal prosecution side, FBI, US Marshals, DEA, all those agencies have it.
All right. And, and then there's a website where you can go to see, again, if somebody has an outstanding? And you said that is called Mildred? Could you just say it again very clearly?
It is the Milrin.
Mil what?
Milrin. Let me get the correct meaning of that. It's the Mariana's Law Enforcement Network. Let me get you the exact, so it's the Mariana Law Enforcement Regional Information Network.
Okay. Senator Perez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Regarding the outstanding warrants, do you have an analysis as far as what percentage is drug-related or repeat offenses?
I don't have that analysis with me.
As far as intuition, what do you think? Is it a lot, or a big portion of that?
As far as drug offenses, we do see a lot of charges involving drugs on the warrant.
Are they repeat offenders?
Oh, yes. There's a lot of recidivists.
Okay.
And there's offenders that are still in, you know, in and out of prison today, the same ones I witnessed over 20 years ago. You know, I mean, it's like, we know who they are already, basically. They're, they're in and out of prison.
Yeah, just in line with what Senator Torres was saying, it's, you know, there's some, you know, there's probably underlying issues that can be addressed in a different way, I feel. The other thing is, you know, relating to, you know, the training, ethical training, is there, is there a proactive program within the marshal system where there's ethical training being done?
Ethical training? Yes. Well, we actually, we call it professionalism training, and it's training that I actually conduct for my division, and I've conducted recently. And, you know, it tells them the do's and the don'ts off-duty, as well as on-duty, and that deputy marshals are peace officers, sworn-in peace officers, held to a higher standard, and so they have to act accordingly, so forth, and to be aware of outside affiliations, stuff like that.
Senator, if I may, so as part of our onboarding for our new employees, we do ethics training for all new employees. I just recently met with our HR department and our judicial educator, and we're going to ensure that we provide a follow-on training on, on a variety, including ethics, customer service, ethics. We're making sure that our active shooter and a slew of training events that we have reoccurring, and we're holding it quarterly for all of our employees. So it's not just the marshals, it's the probation officers, as well as all judicial employees. We're making sure that they go through those types of training.
Upon employment, as well as ongoing, annually, or monthly, quarterly?
Annually.
Annually, okay. Thank you.
There's so many employees, we're trying to space it out throughout the year. We realize that it's very difficult to shut down and have the training, but we're working on that right now, just for your information.
And is there, like, continuing quality assurance as far as, you know, adjusting the training program to the needs of the, the force?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, go ahead, go, sir.
You first.
Yes, yes, there is. We'll continue to update the, the training course pertaining to the needs of the time.
Thank you very much.
And then the follow-up to that is, after a training session is conducted, exit surveys need to be done. We get the input from all the participants, how they felt about the training, whether or not it was relevant, and then we can continue to develop the training curriculum to meet the needs as we continue to move forward. Thank you.
All right. And so, in concluding that topic, are there any additional measures that the judiciary intends to implement going forward that might give more assurance to the public that there is no selective enforcement of the warrants, or favoritism of, you know, those who are not being picked up?
No. Like I referred to in our professionalism training, our marshals are held to a higher standard as peace officers, and if any marshal is found participating in any kind of wrongdoing, whether it's in reference to the allegations or what have you, then they will be held accountable. And we do have processes in place to ensure that anyone found acting in that manner will be held accountable.
And I think on the same note, when the clerk, when a deputized clerk processes a warrant, and it's then assigned to a marshal clerk for execution by specific marshals on, wherever, whatever section they're assigned to, the clerks do take an oath as well. So they're deputized, and they're sworn in, and they understand the oath and their code of conduct in handling that court document issued by a judge. So even they don't have the liberty of saying, well, I want to assign this warrant to this marshal. It was signed by the judge. So it's all, it's all automated in our case management system, and there's a check and balance. If we, if we learn of information that something did happen, there's a way that we can verify that. But again, it's all, there's no, there's no way that you could just choose, because they assign it to a marshal clerk, who then assigns it to a section in the marshal's division, and based on the marshals that are assigned to those different sections, yeah.
All right. Thank you very much. Just to clarify, Chief, I mean, Mr. Lozama, would you say that your investigation, your internal investigation then is closed?
Yes, the internal investigation is closed.
All right. Okay. So, the third topic on our agenda this morning is regarding sex offenders. And so, an earlier roundtable on May 20, we discussed that the sex, the monitoring of sex offenders on the Sex Offender Registry. These are registered sex offenders who are not on probation or parole, but are classified as unsupervised, which was at that time clarified, and, but we wanted to know what steps the judiciary has taken. We discussed at that time collaborating with other law enforcement and doing additional verifications, in addition to four times a year, of the information are those people on the Sex Offender Registry. So I wanted to follow up, whether there has, you've had the opportunity to do additional monitoring of those on the Sex Offender Registry, or any, implement any of those procedures that we discussed.
So, let me just introduce the individuals, Senator. So what we, who we have before us is our Chief Probation Officer, Chief Ugin, and Senior Probation Officer, Ruben Payumo. So Ruben is responsible for the Sex Offender Registry Unit, and they're here to respond to your question.
Good morning, Senators. Regarding the, regarding the increased monitoring of sex offenders, since the July oversight hearing, there, there was an operation, there was a task force that went out, and they normally do that twice a year, the Operation Deviant Guard. And I can have Officer Ruben Payumo, who is our officer in charge for the Sex Offender Registry, to speak to that.
Good morning, Senator. So since that last hearing on May, we did one Deviant Guard operation with the US Marshals and Immigration and Local Marshals, a collaboration. We were able to get that off in June, complete that, or early July, and we did over 100 home verifications in that one operation alone that week. Now, we weren't able to secure another Deviant Guard operation for the rest of this year, but that didn't stop us, me and my staff, from going out and, I believe, making approximately 400 additional home verifications since May. We also started, we also started, I know there was a discussion about having individuals who didn't have access to Internet, making this information available to them. And so we started creating these binders with, for separate villages, with all the registered offenders in that village within the binder, and started delivering that, disseminating that out to the mayor's offices. So I believe we've done 10 so far, and by the end of the year, we should have all the mayor's offices completed. Aside from that, we have all our regular duties that we have to take care of as well, but that's what we've done since the last hearing.
We were also fortunate to have had a visit from the Smart Office Department of Justice, the Sentencing Monitoring, Apprehending, Registration, and Training Office, visit our jurisdiction also this year, and so received further guidance from them in terms of what other avenues can be included to enhance monitoring of sex offenders.
So would you describe the, the increased home monitoring that you've been doing? I want to thank you for this. Would you describe it as increase in, compared to your regular procedures, or is it just the same? Because you had described it before, there would be for a year in conjunction with the other agencies, and then you're doing your own now.
Yes, it's definitely been an increase. I know that last year, I believe we did three Deviant Guard operations, and each one we did over 100 verifications. So, this year alone, we had two Deviant Guard operations, one in early part of the year, and then another one in June or July. We did our 200 verifications then, and the additional 400 already, we've doubled the amount from last year. And my goal is to do even more, and so I'm going to ask the Chief Probationer to assign an additional probational officer to our section, so we can get, and be a presence out in the community, so that these offenders know that we're actively monitoring them and the community as well.
Right. Appreciate that. We, we discussed a monthly review. Is that possible?
As far as the Deviant Guard operation, I know that was mentioned by Senator Shelton, that she'd like to see it happen monthly, but that's a matter that the US Marshals, they're the ones funding the operation and doing a lot of the organizing. We provide the data, the information. I'm not sure every month is something they are able to fund, but we certainly are asking for as much as they can.
What about the ones that you do by yourself?
The ones we do with our office, that's on a daily basis, whenever we can get out. We've done it, I'm trying to do it as much as I can, every chance we get. We have offenders coming in and reporting new addresses constantly, and those, of course, are the priority, but also our high-risk offenders, we try to make it to their addresses as much as, as we can, just to let them know that, yeah, we're out there and we're monitoring them.
How many, how many on the Sex Offender Registry right now?
That's an open-ended question. Do you mean how many are out in the community?
Correct.
Okay. That number is 375.
All right. So 400 home verifications is excellent? Is that correct? I mean-
Yes, the amount of staff we have and the number of hours we actually are able to get out there, yes, that's a good number.
Is that like a 100%, then?
When I say 400 home verifications, I don't mean we went to everybody's house once, because we do multiple checks on several high-risk offenders, like I said, or the new addresses that are reported, and some individuals change their addresses every month. So that means every month, we have to go out to that new reported address and verify that.
All right. Could you just explain how you determine a high-risk offender? How did you, they get prioritized? What's a high risk?
Actually, a high-risk offender, if we're talking sex offender, is usually are the Level 1 offenders and Level 2 offenders. Those are their lifetime offenders, and because of the crime that they were convicted of, they were classified at that level.
All right. Thank you. Questions by the panel? All right. Appreciate that. Thank you very much. The final item in the same category was the implementation of a sex offender risk assessment, or, we were talking about also at prior roundtables regarding pre-sentence reports that are available to judges before the sentence. And so, by statute, these are required, and that the reports include, for certain crimes, offenders' history of delinquency or criminality, the physical and mental conditions. I pulled out some of the items, and any other matters that the probation officer deems relevant, or the court directs to be included. So I wanted to ask if the judiciary, we had talked with Dr. Pottis at our roundtable before about implementing an assessment tool specific to sex offenders, or their danger to the community, because we had an uproar in the community, very understandably, regarding sex offenders and repeat sex offenders being released and, and then reoffending. And so we wanted to know, is, if, if the judges had before them information that was designed to tell them whether they were likely to reoffend or not, whether they were, you know, a danger to the community because of the unique circumstances, the sex offender and the type of behavior that that is. So, I guess I wanted to ask the judiciary if these assessments are available to judges for consideration at sentencing? If there's been any assessment tool, in particularly related to sex offenders, that has been implemented?
There, the tool, that, there is a tool, and that's the Ohio Risk Assessment System Tool, and normally during a pre-sentence investigation and report, the ORAS Community Supervision Tool, or Communities Screening Supervision Screening Tool is, is used, and that score is, depending on that score, if they have to use a more detailed screening tool, the Community Supervision Tool, that tool is used, and the assessment results are provided in the pre-sentence investigation report for the court.
That tool, ORAS, is used in every case? Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
So it's not specific to sex offenders, or the risk of reoffending in sex offender, sex offender case?
No, it's not. It's for every case.
All right. And, and at the time that we had discussed, we, it was described to us that the ORAS tool was used especially to determine whether they were at high risk of not appearing at the next hearing, as opposed to- as opposed to reoffending in the community or that type?
There are different tools within the ORAS system. And so, there's the ORAS Pre-Trial Tool that is used initially at the first entry into the system, and that basically tells the court whether the person is likely to reoffend or not reappear. And then, there's the ORAS Community Supervision Tool that is used later on after the individual, and like I had indicated, at the time of sentencing, that is used to determine how the likelihood of the defendant will be in supervision.
Risk of what?
Risk of reoffending.
Reoffending?
Yes.
So, you're now saying that there's a segment of the ORAS tool that can be used to determine risk of reoffending at sentencing?
Yes.
All right. And Dr. Pottas, we had discussed at the roundtable this SOARAG, Sex Offenders Risk Assessment Guide, that could be used along with the ORAS to check for and predict the risk for sex offenders based on probation or other release?
Right, that was part of the written testimony that we were, that the court provided. That's a, it's a community tool. It's nonproprietary. It's been used for decades. It's basically also to kind of get a number. It actually gives a number, either a minus or a plus or a zero of chance of possibly reoffending within a certain period of time. I use it all the time if I were to be ordered to do a psychosexual assessment on a released parolee or probationer.
So, you are implementing this on your own? Or is it by, is it done for every pre-sentence report?
No, not for, not for, I don't even think probation is using that tool. I think that, I guess what I've learned out of, from assessing so many of these offenders, everyone is literally different than one another. I think that what probation uses, ORAS, is a pretty decent, good general scale of dangerousness and recidivism, whether it's family violence, sex offense, or drug offense. So, I think that's okay and appropriate for the general population. Each sex offender, depending on their crime, like Ruben was saying, can be quite heinous. It can range from heinous and horrible to, you know, fourth degree, which obviously isn't as heinous or horrible. And everyone is different, and along the way, there is some assessment going on, I think, I believe, in probation. And when it gets to my level, it's up to the judge to decide if they want to order, based on all the information he or she has.
That's after sentencing?
Even after they serve their time as well.
All right. So, that SOARAG and your efforts in that regard are not really put before a judge when he's determining sentencing?
I, oh, no, no, definitely not. It would be after, after.
All right. We, yeah, this was all brought up because of, at the time, it was very clear there was very limited treatment for sex offenders, and there continues to be very limited treatment for sex offenders in our community, in DOC, and the judiciary, and in the behavioral health. It's limited, and so, there was no guarantee that anyone who was sentenced was going to be treated. But they, it's, of course, they were going to be released at the end of the sentence, and we wanted to know whether, you know, judges know this, that there is a high risk of reoffence on their release, because, you know, this, it's kind of a revolving thing. We have stiff penalties in place. They're not always used, and we wanted to figure out, if there is a high risk, why aren't the stiffer penalties used? But I guess that, but do you believe then, Chief, that the ORAS tool is sufficient to inform judges as to the risk of reoffence without treatment of sex offenders?
Sorry, normally, the, if the court, if there's a recommendation, then normally, the recommendation will include that there be an assessment and that the defendant comply with treatment if treatment is recommended. So, that's presented at the pre-sentence stage for sentencing to the court.
Senator, and that the judge has all the information, hopefully, by pre-sentencing of their history and the level of crime and the level of, if they've ever reoffended, even before with other stuff. So, I guess we rely on the judge to decide to order something, whether, with all the information they have, whether they're risky or not, high-risk or not. So, I guess we rely on an order for an assessment if they believe it's warranted as part of their sentencing. I mean, that's the assumption.
But assessing the risk after the sentence has already been made is, yeah, I'm, I'm, we've already, that person's release has already been predetermined. And then, we're assessing their risk, and we might find out high risk, and then, there's nothing we can do about that. And there's no treatment that we can mandate if it's not available. And so, it was our understanding, based on the discussion, that sexual offenders are very unique, that they're, they are not going to be cured by being put in prison, and that they have a high risk. Well, there's certain categories of them that are likely to reoffend. And so, that, it's that. I wanted to see if that type of information is consistent, you know, consistently put before the courts.
Senator, I can, I can say that regardless of the risk levels of sex offenders, if they are for supervision purposes placed in probation, then the supervision will be high-risk in terms of, regardless of their risk levels, whether it's low, moderate, or high, the supervision should be high because of the nature of their offense. And, and so, that is what we work at doing. Like in all the other divisions, we are also faced with some, and you've heard it from Ruben, some staffing challenges in terms of shortage. And so, that is the attitude when it comes to the supervision of sex offenders that we have at probation, is to supervise all as high-risk.
Okay, so at probation, they're all supervised as high-risk. On release, final release, they're supervised as high-risk, depending on their level by, I'm looking for Mr. Payumo, by the Sex Offender Registry personnel, probation officers. And, and then, we had, yeah, at that time, talked about parole, which of course, is not in your jurisdiction, but it was also, because they're also released on parole, we wanted to see how they could be managed at that time.
The ideal thing would be, I mean, like you said, with resources and with, with staff, DOC would, if they were, if the individual was in DOC or serving time, that there was some assessment, especially for the sex offenders, high-risk sex offenders, that there was some type of assessment going on in DOC while they're under their custody. And then, right before, when they leave, that if they were assessed for their urges and things like that, that would be ideal. That would be the best, because they have a captive audience. And it's only when they're released and they're, let's say, high-risk than probation, or whomever is ordered to supervise these people, that they need to follow these folks.
But there isn't any necessary, they aren't necessarily supervised on release from DOC, right? I mean, I mean, only by the Sex Offender Registry supervision.
Well, if they're on parole, then they would be supervised by the parole.
On parole, yes, but if not on parole and on regular release, which is why I'm talking about putting this information in front of the courts when they make their sentences, right? Knowing whether there's treatment or not, knowing whether sex offenders can be rehabilitated or not, are these types, or this person, right, in front of them before their sentence? That, that was the goal of this pursuit.
I was just gonna say that one of the things that, when we had the visit from the Smart Staff, our advisors, one of the things that they had indicated that was being done by the community are what they call the Circles of Sustainability and Accountability, and this is a community-based organization, and it seems to be one thing that is being implemented throughout the US as well as in other nations. And it's the community itself, and I'm not real familiar with it. And it's the community itself also taking some of the ownership to assist sex offenders that are out in the community and holding them accountable as well.
All right. Well, the community is looking to us to ensure that sex offenders are not released if we know they are likely to reoffend especially, or that their release is, you know, set out longer because the statutes allow for that, if they are likely to reoffend. And so, we want to ensure that the judges have all the information that they can absolutely have in front of them, up-to-date science, you know, more informed than my guessing up here. But, so, we had asked that the judiciary put in front of those courts as much information as possible in regards to this specific offense, because we had seen reoffenders in the community actually released and reoffending. And I'm gonna see if there are any other questions by the panel? Are there any questions on this topic?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just if you can clarify, how does supervision for high-risk offenders, different if they're on parole versus the Sex Offender Registry? Is there any difference in that?
If they're on parole, then there's that added supervision by the parole officers. And so, the Sex Offender Registry, they, they have to, they have their own requirements that they have to adhere to, such as, as Ruben had indicated, they have to verify if there's a change in residence. They have to verify that information. Sex offenders have to come in, depending on their level, and report every so often, whether it's every three months, every six months, and then, on top of that, if there are any changes in their residency, then, then that has to be verified. And so, it's part of the verification of where they're at, when they, and where they say that they're at.
And if they're on the Sex Offender Registry, is that, is there a different protocol? For their supervision? Are they supervised at that point?
If they're on the registry, basically, it's verifying the information. And I do know that with the extra efforts with the Marshals Office, then there's...
Yeah, I believe if, once they get off their parole, supervision or probation supervision, it's not really supervising anymore. It's just monitoring. That's what the registry is about. That's our priority. And we have no supervision authority over them. We can't, I mean, there are no conditions that they need to follow, as long as they report to us where they live and all the other registered information. So, we're basically just monitoring them at that point.
Are there high-risk offenders on the registry that are not supervised?
Are there high-risk sex offenders on the registry that aren't supervised? I am not sure I know what you mean.
Just, I guess the point is, you know, we want to ensure that the safety of our people, and we just want to make sure that there are enough measures in place to assure that.
Yes, absolutely. We have high-risk offenders on the registry, but they are being monitored, and monitored a lot closely then, as opposed to maybe the low-risk offenders. But they are not really, I can't say they're being supervised once they get off supervision of parole or probation. I'm not sure if that makes sense.
Yeah, just if you can clarify the protocols. What is, how, how does that look like if you're a high-risk offender versus not a high-risk offender? Is there different protocols in place?
Yes, for the Level 1 offenders, like I said, they're lifetime registrants. They're never gonna come off the registry, and they're required to report to us once every 90 days. That's if there are no changes to their information. Now, if there's a change to their information, if they come in and report to our office today, and then, next week, they move to another residence, they have three days to come in and report that new information to us. But aside from that, 90 days for the rest of their lives. For the Level 2 risk offenders, they're also lifetime registrants. They're also considered high-risk. They're required to report to our office once every 180 days, so, once every six months. And then, for our so-called low-risk offenders, the Level 3 offenders, their registration period is 15 years, and they're required to come in and report to us once a year.
And is the Sex Offender Registry updated at that point when they come and report, if they, they change residences?
Yes, once they come in and report a new address to us, once we are able to verify that address, that address will be posted, in most cases, that same day. I try to get out, as soon as I get a new address, I try to get out, maybe the next day or the next week, to verify it, so that we know that the address we're posting is accurate.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, to clarify, Mr. Payumo, the, you're monitoring their residence information that they are providing?
Residence, employment, whatever they report.
All right. But persons on a Sex Offender Registry are, they also have other restrictions in the community as to where they can be or not be? Is that correct?
Here in Guam, I believe there are no other restrictions. I know that there's places they can't work. They're not allowed to. But I know that they can't receive government-assistant housing, like, for instance, Gura. But no laws that state they can't be 500 feet, for example, from a school, or a mall, or a theater where minors congregate.
All right. So, okay, so we're monitoring where their residence is stated, and you're trying to get the word out to the community through electronic, on the website, and by, by binders in the mayor's offices as to, so anyone can see who's in their community and the sex offenders. But we're not really supervising anything else that they're doing at that point? All right. That goes back to the release, why we're concerned about what the terms of their release are upfront. Any questions on this topic? We'll open it up for any, any conclusionary questions or comments from any of the members, please. Senator Nelson?
Thank you. Mr. Lizama, I asked early on in the public hearing how many, or this Oversight Hearing, how many detainees are being detained at DOC by the judiciary? Do you have that accurate account now?
Yes, I do, Senator. It's 185 detainees.
Thank you. I just want, I would like to also clarify. I was under the impression that the internal investigation with the connection with Mayor Blas and saying that he had connections to the court, I wanted to clarify, is this internal investigation completed amongst the Marshals?
Yes, the internal investigation is completed, Senator.
And so, what would prevent the information from this investigation being given out to the public?
The internal investigation, Senator? Let me bring up my staff attorney.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lizama.
Need to turn that on. Christina Beard, Staff Attorney for the Judiciary of Guam. Unfortunately, I have to correct the Administrator of the Courts, that investigation is not closed because the case is still pending with the federal courts. And I think that the Administrator of the Courts didn't state that to you all, that the case is still ongoing. Until that case closes, our investigation will stay open.
Okay. And so, that is why you're unable to release any information to the public regarding your internal investigation, because the federal case is still open?
That is correct.
Okay. And so, that also means that your internal investigation case is not closed as well?
That's correct.
So, it is not completed, because it is still pending, the federal case?
That is correct. We are still working with the federal FBI and the US Attorneys on this case.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
And I just want to make sure, the Administrator of the Courts was not aware of that information.
I see. Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. I'd like to thank everyone for their service, the Marshals and the probation officers, all the clerks, and Chief Justice. Merry Christmas, and thank you for being here, and thank you for your service.
Senator Torres?
As we listen to everything that's been presented today, and we consider...
As we listen to everything that's been presented today, and we consider all the challenges that we have, including the challenge with public perception about what everybody's doing, the policies that we set in place, practices and policies that you set in place, what I just wanted to comment on is that we need to also reassure ourselves that the evidence-based practices are still very much alive in the courts, and that we operate on evidence-based practices, and as well as keeping the restorative justice programs that you have in place sound and solid. Because I think that, in looking at everything, what's important is that we, we know that at the end of the, at the end of the game, what we're looking for is true justice and bringing people and communities whole, even when infractions are committed by people against others. So I just want to say that, you know, a lot of times we have to, it's about the bigger picture and what our end goal is. And our end goal, of course, is to administer justice in a fair and impartial way, but also to ensure that the people that go through the justice system, you know, have an opportunity to, once their sentences are completed and they're, they make restitution to the community, that they can, they can in fact, you know, go on with their lives, and that the community can also heal and go on with our lives as well. So, Sisus Masi for all you do, and thank you for sharing your expertise with us, because I think it helps everybody understand that there's more to what you do than we're aware of, and sometimes we have to just trust each other, that we're doing the best, you know, in the interest of our community and our island.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Perez?
All right. If, I wanted to follow up with one question, was in other jurisdictions, they use something called the state identification number, and that's how they consolidate all the different aliases perhaps, or names that might be, a person might be known as, so they're known by this one number. And I was wondering if something like that could be put on the VCCH so that, that, if you can't add on the release orders to the VCCH, or the confinement orders to the VCCH system, that at least GPD, the AG, and DOC would have immediate access to at least a number that consolidates all of that information?
We have been working on that. One of the hurdles was Guam Police's system was antiquated. They are in the process of upgrading that right now. So that is one of the requirements to meet that SID. That is a goal of the CJAC, is to get that SID in place, but there's a lot of other things that need to be put in place before all these systems can talk together and say that when you get arrested and you get booked, it sends the fingerprint to AFIS, it says, "Okay, you're in there as Mickey Mouse," and then it'll promulgate to all the other systems. So we are, we have been working on that, and I know Guam Police is in the middle of an upgrade right now. I don't know the percentage of that upgrade, but once that's in place, then the other steps will come into. That is something that the CJAC has been working on for a while, to get that SID number in place so that it stops that AKA names and things like that. That is one of the processes that we are currently working on.
So you have no idea how long that will take?
Um...
The court can't implement that on their end?
No, because it's a collaboration of other systems put together, so, and it works also with the FBI. When you send that fingerprint back, it says, "I have multiple records of John Doe." So his real name is Mickey Mouse, so...
All right. But you're on the CJAC, is that correct?
I'm...
Well, you work with them?
Yes.
CJAC, so how long do you expect that to take?
I wasn't part of the last couple meetings, so I don't know the answer. Not sure if these GPD upgrades have been completed, so unfortunately, I don't have their response, Senator. I can certainly make a call and get back to you this afternoon regarding that.
Right. Because, because you've told us that you could not, or it might be expensive, you don't know how much, to put the release orders and the confinement orders on the VCCH system. We've, we've established that the VCCH system is, is used by many of the parties that we're talking about here. And they've been trained on it, DOC's being trained on it, that's something that they could easily look to for release and confinement orders. But if those are not immediately available, I was, yeah, seeing if these numbers instead could be immediately available, and that way, the, all the cases would pop up on their end, under the VCCH.
Yeah. When the VCCH was first created, it was a collaboration of all the law enforcement communities, put together what they wanted to see. So that's how that system evolved. And that wasn't part of the equation when they first put that together. So that's why it's not there, because it's actually a live system, there's no database. It goes out to GPD, to DOC, and all these places at the same time, and gets the information as you type it in.
All right. If you could then, Mr. Lozoma, please check how long that would be, follow up with the CJAC, how long this GPD use of SID numbers is going to take to be implemented? Or see again what the actual cost of implementing, or, you know, just adding the release or confinement orders on the VCCH systems in addition to warrants of arrest that are already there? Or adding on to the release orders themselves, all the different case numbers that this person is known under the court system with?
Yes, Senator.
Or, or sharing just where with the DOC, right? And I, you had told me that that was the least likely to occur, so we're looking for options to double, have a check, check and balance system, that we can have a double check on any type of release. I think that would, that would very, be very helpful for the community and give them some reassurance.
Yes. Once we get the information, I'll speak with the Chief Justice, and then we can make that amount, where we're at on the SIDs, information available to you and the rest of your colleagues, Senator.
All right. Great. Again, I want to thank the Chief Justice for all her cooperation in this regard. We've sent back, we sent correspondence to and from the judiciary, and they've been very informative and established, showing us their processes. And I thank you all for being here today to help us fill in additional information in regards to these processes, how we can get information to the Department of Corrections, and that they can use most efficiently. And of course, you know, they've got information they can use, but we want the most efficient, most, you know, useful and safe system that we can all rely on. So I want to, and I want to thank all of you for your work in this regard, in helping us to keep our community safe, especially serving our justice system. Sisus Masi, thank you. 10:26, I forgot to announce the time. It's now 10:26 a.m. We'd like to begin as soon as everyone can take their seats. All right. So this morning, we are convened for a confirmation hearing on the executive appointments of Robert Camacho as a member of the Guam Parole Board, on the appointment of Mr. Paul Palmis to the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners, Ms. Nicole Calvo as a member of the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board, and Mr., or Dr. David Atienza as a member of the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board. Again, I'd like to thank my colleagues, Senator Mary Torres, Mary Camacho Torres, for being present here at this hearing. And I'd like again to thank all of you who are here to give testimony, or just to hear or witness this public hearing. We're going to begin with the appointment of Mr. Robert Camacho to the Guam Parole Board. So, according to 9GCA 85.26, the general powers of the parole board include release on parole any person confined in any penal or correctional institution of Guam, revoking parole from any parolee, and that the board shall adopt rules and regs to, that are consistent with the law, to carry out its duties. They should conduct all their meetings in accordance with the open government law. They should incorporate in their rules the rights and restrictions of an inmate during a parole application or revocation hearing, the presence of legal counsel or lay representative on behalf of an inmate during a hearing, the right of an inmate to receive in writing a specific reason or reasons for denial of parole, to include deficiencies to be addressed in preparation of a future parole application, rules for recusal of members due to conflict, and any other rules that the board might need. Nothing shall prevent the board from interviewing victims in private. Victims are supposed to be notified of parole hearings, and I've received a couple complaints that that's not the case, but I think that there are efforts to improve that system and make sure from all involved that they are. And I think we've been in conversation with the Attorney General's Office as well as to, victims' advocates are not right now required to be present, but we would like to try to make that available to victims as well. According to the law, the rules and regulations may, may allow the board to conduct deliberations in closed meetings, and may vote by secret ballot on matters relative to the release on revocation of or discharge from parole, notwithstanding the open government law. All right. And as you know, that we've discussed recently with roundtables and some bills, some of the releases on parole that the community has been concerned with, and we've tried to assist the parole board by putting resources, making resources available to it, including the pre-sentence reports that are available to judges before they sentence persons, so that they can have a more full assessment of the person before them. All right. And so now I'm going to proceed with testimony by those here for Mr. Camacho. So, Mr. Shizaki, Chief, if you would like to proceed, and then we'll have Mr. Camacho. Is there anyone else who would like to testify on behalf of Mr. Camacho? Please have a seat.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Senators, I'm here to support the confirmation of Robert Camacho. He's a good man, I've known him for 17 years. We met at the Department of Corrections 17 years ago, or just before that. And I've known him since then, he's a very competent professional, and if anybody should be a Director of Corrections, it should be Robert Camacho. But, so, when I got appointed the last time, I knew he was trying to get the job, and I told the governor, "You should give it to that young man, because he's grown up in corrections, and he knows parole." I don't know anything about corrections, nor parole. And he said, "Yeah, but we want you to do it." So I said, "Okay." So anyway, after I got the formal nomination, I approached Mr. Camacho, and I asked him, "Please help me, because I really don't know anything about corrections. In exchange, I will help you get ready so you can take this job." Yeah? And I'm thankful that Governor Camacho listened, and halfway through the first year, he decided to do the switch. So I wasn't smiling, I was just thankful. And the governor asked me who I would recommend, and I said, "This man." And he's never failed anybody. He's honest, competent, professional, he's got all the earmarks of doing everything that, and he's done customs, he's done airport police, he's been Deputy Chief of the Guam Police Department, and then eventually, after I got kicked out of prison, he became Director of Corrections. of corrections. And I've always been impressed by him. He provided me staff work when I was director, and then when the deputy director position was vacated, I appointed him immediately. And I'm thankful that Robert is here to serve our community and parole board. He was a parole officer. He knows everything about parole. So it would be a drastic mistake to even consider denying him this confirmation. So I'm here to endorse him. Thank you very much.
Oh, Frank Shizaki from Zottina.
Sisus Masie, Chief Shizaki. Ms. Teyama?
Yes, my name is Teresa Teyama, and I am here also likewise to join Director Shizaki in recommending and requesting your approval of Mr. Robert Camacho as parole board member. I know him on a different level. He is my uncle. I grew up with him, and he is one of 12 siblings. He's the youngest. And he is my uncle. I've always looked up to him and credit so much of where I am today because of him. I do know from the other level, aside from all his professional accolades, on the other side, behind the walls of the house, is that he really is very respectful, always commanded that respect and honor, and would expect that, and likewise is very committed and dedicated to whatever he could do. And he will kill me because when he was going through the University of Guam ROTC program, and they were going through that leadership, I can remember how many times he was so obsessed with making sure that his boots and shoes were shiny to a tee. And I believe when they graduated in his class, and they all received their commissioning, they received top honors nationwide. So that is a testament to just how in the small things can lead to bigger things, and to, he's at the pinnacle of where he is. All I can say is that we would be remiss if we did not have him as a newest member of the parole board, and I humbly request that you do grant him that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Teyama. Ms. Ortiz?
Yes, good morning, Chairman Tari and members. I am Linda Ortiz. I am employed with the Department of Corrections for over 36 years. I come to submit my personal testimony in favor of Mr. Robert Camacho's appointment as a member of the parole board. Now, Mr. Shizaki practically took all my words in his status as a parole officer. My first contact with Bob was back in 1985, when he came on board as a parole officer one. I watched him move from parole officer one, two, and three. Casework Division works very close to the parole division, so I watch him grow there. He takes his caseload very seriously. He's committed to the family, even to the victims. He's been fair to both sides, victims and the clients that he represents. Now, as I remember Bob, there's many contributions that Bob has presented or given correction, but the one contribution that I do remember most, how do I say most vivid, I guess, is bringing, his contribution of bringing the department to automation. That came also with his family members assisting the department with the automation. And what's his, I guess, to keep it short, because I could go on and on, as he elevated himself from parole officer one, and like Mr. Shizaki said, up to acting deputy director to the Department of Corrections Director. He has never compromised his position in any way from parole officer one up to us being the director of correction. Bob, to me, if I could say, if it, this is what I remember Bob most important or focus more, is that if things can be done, it will be done. And my gosh, for him to be a parole board member, he can make the changes, he can address things, that he is known as a parole officer, all the way up to even casework, the Department of Corrections Director. So he would definitely be an asset to the board, and I support highly and sincerely his recommendation for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz. Thirty-six years, that's very impressive. Thank you. So your testimonies, they came very well. I would also like to recognize the presence of Senators Sabina Perez, and now if we could hear from the nominee, Mr. Camacho.
Good morning, senators, and I would like to begin by thanking Frank and Linda and Teresa here for such kind words, and I deeply appreciate it. And wow, that's wonderful. Thank you very much. I'm lost for words right there. I would also like to begin by thanking the governor and lieutenant governor for nominating me to the parole board. I am truly honored and humbled by their trust and confidence in my ability to be a part of the parole board. Thirty-three years ago, I began my career as a law enforcement officer, as a parole officer, and through these many years, I was able to experience and understand the overwhelming challenges of the criminal justice system. For over 20 years, I served at the Department of Corrections as a parole officer, in the capacity of deputy director and director of corrections. I clearly understand the extreme operational challenges of the Department of Corrections and my essential role as a parole board member. As a parole officer, I made hundreds of pre-parole studies on inmate backgrounds and interviewed numerous victims and family members. I saw firsthand the unseen tragedy of the life choices of inmates. I heard the pain of victims and their families as they relive their horrific accounts of what had affected them. I also heard from the families of inmates who also greatly suffer from, because of those wrong choices, and it is a tragedy untold and unseen by many of the general public. I've dedicated most of my adult life to law enforcement with Department of Corrections, Customs, the Guam Police Department, and Airport Police. I've been the chairman and vice chairman of the Peace Officer Standards of Training for many years. Many of my brothers were police officers and retired after many years. My father served at 35 years in the Department of Public Safety as retired, as a major. As a police, a military police veteran, I handled enemy prisoners of war from several camps at Operation Desert Storm. And this life of law enforcement is a calling, and I, once again, in retirement, I offer my knowledge and experience as a parole board member to help out the community. Many years ago, the average education of inmates, I'm not sure what it is now, was about ninth grade. Many of those inmates come from broken homes. They have an extensive history of alcohol and drug abuse individually and in their family. Many suffer from severe mental illness and ongoing health problems. Many come from a history of family violence and lack of a positive role modeling. I have been the chairman of the Adjustment Classification Committee at Department of Corrections. I handle hundreds of cases and had to determine the most suitable placement for housing and treatment. I was a chairperson also for the disciplinary hearing board for those inmates who had behavioral problems. I hope to work with Director Shizaki and Deputy Carbelito in ensuring that these issues are addressed appropriately prior to inmates coming before the board. We must ensure that we reduce any risk to the community. I will consciously discharge my duties by first keeping in mind the public safety. I will always keep in mind the parameters of the law and ensure that the vote, my vote will be based on the inmate's ability to reintegrate back into the community by his history and incarceration record. I realize that the parole board member is a serious responsibility, and I will not take this role lightly. I understand that the public will trust that I will keep their safety first and foremost, and this is a correctional institution. I believe in the principles of community reintegration, reformation, restorative justice and treatment and rehabilitation. I believe in community-based corrections. I believe in redemption and recovery. I will make the best judgment possible to ensure that there's little to no risk to the community based on the history, institutional progress, parole plans, and parole supervision. I see parole as a tool to ensure the public is safe. It is a privilege to be granted only when deserved by positive behavior and ability to conform to the laws of Guam. I certainly hope that in the upcoming budget hearings that the legislature keep in mind the parole division needs, the parole division needs officers too. They play an integral part in community safety and continually monitoring the progress of the movement of parolees. It must be a supportive role and not just a supervisory role to ensure the success of the parolees. Parolees need to be involved in community service. I believe they must pay back what they have taken from the victims and their families in whatever manner that is deemed necessary and appropriate. I thank you for allowing me to provide testimony on my application to be part of the Guam Parole Board. I hope that you will view my testimony and my experience as suitable to serve on this board, and I thank you very much for hearing me. Sisus Masie.
Sisus Masie, Chief Camacho. Are there any questions from Senator Mary Torres?
Chief, are you aware of challenges with the parole board right now in terms of their ability to meet at a regular venue, a regular and suitable venue for parole hearings? And are you aware of any challenges with meeting quorum to conduct that?
I do know that they meet at down at Park Street, the conference room area. I don't know, I'm not sure if that is a challenge, or, but I've seen the area, I've seen the conference room, and it seems quite suitable. I'm not sure if the director and the chairman of the parole board, if they want another location, that I'm not aware of. As far as the quorum is concerned, I am not aware of any problems at this point.
Okay, because I know at one point, there was discussion in the media about the conditions that the parole board was supposed to function under, and how they didn't have a permanent area to meet, and that they would be staggered and going all over, which really, it left a lot of people thinking that it wasn't an ideal environment for hearings, either for the people that come to testify or for the board members themselves. So it sounds so that there is a more permanent type of arrangement right now, which I'm glad to hear.
Well, there's two parts to my feeling behind where the location of the parole board. One, we have to consider the victims and the families, and, you know, bringing them into the institution, I feel is very difficult, you know. Security-wise, not only that, but also just the fact of going into an institution where there's fences and, you know, inmates all around. I want to make it as easy as possible for the victims and their families to come to the parole board here without any kind of reservation because of hesitancy regarding their, you know, risk or, you know, being seen by other inmates and so forth. So I think wherever we choose, I think we should always consider that as, you know, as a primary factor.
I also think that, having worked with you when I was the executive manager at the Guam Airport, and you were my chief of airport police, I think we had, I clearly can testify to not only your competency, but your great compassion and empathy to do the right thing for people. Unfortunately, in your role, there's never enough that you can do for victims' families. And I don't think anyone will ever say that enough can be done to repay the harm that was done, but I believe that you have the frame of mind and the experience to navigate those very delicate waters, and for that, I would highly endorse your nomination because I think that you have that character. In addition to your professionalism, you have that soul that I think is a critical component of a parole board when you're weighing the rights of a victim versus the rights of a parolee to restore their lives at some point.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, and I just, I didn't have any questions. I was just more concerned with what you can lend to the parole hearings and facilitating that in the most, you know, reasonable manner.
Thank you. Senator Perez?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Camacho. And looking over your resume, it definitely shows there's a high caliber. You have so much experience, a long history in, and as Ms. Ortiz has said, that you grew up in the system, and you know how it works, and you've had a lot of experience. So I do appreciate your acceptance of this nomination.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize the presence that we also have, at least two parole board members here, present, three. Thank you for being here today and for your continued work. And so Chief Camacho, they're here to witness all the promises that you have made this morning, but I appreciate those. I think you hit on all the topics I am concerned about. The, of course, parole is a balance of, you know, protection of the rights of individuals and through the criminal justice system, and protection of our community. And I am glad that you have stated for the record that safety of the public is your first primary concern, and that you will release on parole when you find little to no risk to the community from that release. And I agree with support of the prisoners, and I was going to discuss with you that, so we have in the court system, the reentry program, adult reentry program. It's very limited to only those who are not high-risk offenders, but the court provides a support system. It helps, this program helps them with getting employment, ensuring that there's family support, that type of thing, and whatever else their challenges might be, drug treatment, but, so I think ideally, we want this for all persons who are looking to be released from the Department of Corrections, and all who are going to be out on parole, that you can also, the parole board can also be a support system in some way, if we are going to see success, reintegration, right?
That is true, ma'am, and I believe that, you know, the parole board has a lot of leeway to determine what type of programs a parolee might go through, community service, treatment programs, alcohol anonymous, and all these other support from, well, mental health or public health. There are areas that can help, and the other parts, I believe, that, you know, there are a lot of religious organizations that are constantly helping inmates in the institution, and I believe that we also can reach out to them and ask them for their support in helping, guiding them, you know, throughout their transition into parole. And that's what I feel is necessary, is the community involvement. And I believe that parolees, if they do not have work or have a job, a business, that they have to be continually active in the community, performing community service or doing something at the mayor's office or something that has to do with paying back some of the, you know, problems that they inflicted on the community. So, you know, I believe in everything that, you know, it has to be an active role, and I will do my best to ensure that we take those things into consideration.
All right, and to assist you, I know it's the parole officers themselves, and we have the Chief Canata here. Thank you, Chief, for being here, and that they are going to play a very instrumental role if you are going to implement all of those or continue to implement some that are already being implemented. So I appreciate that. Do you, do you think you have any conflict of interest? I understand you're retired now.
That's right, ma'am.
Do you have any conflict of interest in this work?
I don't, I do not have any. I don't believe I have any.
All right, no site businesses that profit?
No, no, not, not.
All right. What about your schedule?
My schedule, I do work at GCC with the Peace Officer Standards and Training as a post-director, but that's just twice a week, Wednesdays and Fridays, for four hours.
All right, we've recognized in past hearings that these parole board members spend hours in one hearing, at least four hours, if I understand correctly, sometimes an entire day, multiple times a month because they had a backlog and they were trying to catch up. So it's a huge investment of time, and again, I want to thank those who are doing that work. The parole officers have to be there, the families are there for long periods of time too. But I appreciate your sensitivity to the victims because this has been brought up in several hearings and in my, to me directly in my office. Victims Victims want to feel safe.
That's right.
They're coming into, uh, what to them might look like another, uh, court hearing, right? And we all know how that went for them the first time. It's very challenging. And so, uh, some of them have expressed that in the past, there were location issues, no, no permanent home for the parole board to have their meetings. And so victims' families and witnesses for the, the, you know, uh, potential parolee is, uh, same room. They don't like that, you know? But I'm sure that this has been brought up and that you can do your best to please take care of that. If I can help you with a combination, my understanding is that you, they've been very successful in securing now better places to have these meetings.
Yes, I can assure you, ma'am, that we will all consider all those areas. I just, to bring back, I mean, as I'm going through this thing, I, I think about some of the things where, uh, times where I had to go and interview a victim and, uh, their shock that I'm actually there, because sometimes many of them have put it back in their memory. And, you know, 10, 15 years later, we, it's, uh, rehashing of that terrific time. I've even had a, an instance where, uh, we found, I found a victim and I located her and she quit her job and, and was lost. I could not find her again. That's the kind of traumatic effect, uh, you know, that when a victim goes through, uh, you know, uh, being a victim of crimes, that sometimes, especially sexual assaults, there's, the, the trauma is a lifetime. And so I, I will do my best, whatever, to ensure that we keep those, the sensitivity, have the sensitivity of victims and their families. Yeah. And, but I assure you that we have to, like you said, have a balance of everything, uh, depending on the crime, the, the treatment and rehabilitation, the history, the parole supervision and, uh, the overall plan. Every parolee that goes out has to have a residence, a employment plan and a parole advisor and, you know, just something that shows that he's going to be settled when he comes in, uh, into the community and abide by the law.
Thank you. Um, and in particular with sex offenders, as you brought up, the, we, the community has been outraged recently on, from release of persons on parole who then re-offended. And, and it's very painful to the entire community to see this happen. We want our criminal justice system to prevent that. And so, um, you know, we're trying our best to find gaps, close those. It's actually, I think, a, a large part of it is tools. And as science progresses and everything progresses, our treatment abilities progress, we are looking to you who are on the parole board to really enforce that, you know, to ensure that they get what they need, uh, that the risk is, is estimated appropriately.
That's right.
And, um, it takes a lot of different, uh, specialties, I guess, in the community to, to come to a, a perfect understanding on that. But please, we are asking you to all use your due diligence to prevent reoffense especially.
That's right.
Okay. So I want to thank you again for your agreement to accept this nomination, um, and, and to serve on the parole board. There's no other comment than, uh, we will accept further testimony and until next Friday, or as soon as possible, if you could get that into our office or through email, senators terlaughguam@gmail.com. Sisus Masi to all of you.
Thank you, ma'am.
For all those who've tests, who've signed up to testify for the appointment of Dr. Paul Pomas, please have a seat. And Dr. Pomas, if you could sit in the middle? Before I go any further, Dr. Pomas, am I pronouncing your name correctly? Okay, great. All right. All right. So we are now on the part of our agenda for the appointment of Dr. Paul Pomas to serve as a veterinary medicine representative member of the Guam Board of Allied Health. So we will, well, the powers and responsibilities of the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners, that this is a combination of different specialties. For example, one veterinary representative, but specialties from other disciplines. And, um, they are the licensing board for the allied health professions. And they approve or deny applications for licenses, license renewals, they investigate complaints, they cooperate with law enforcement, and they really are regulatory board when it comes to, uh, ensuring that those in the allied health professions are, are conducting, uh, safe practices for the community as, as required by law. So signed up to testify is, we'll begin with the side, uh, Mr. Cyrus. Sorry.
Thank you, Chairperson.
Cyrus Lur.
My name is Cyrus Lur and I'm here to provide testimony on behalf of the appointment of Dr. Paul Pomas to the position of veterinary medicine representative on the Guam Board of Allied Health. Uh, in the interest, in the interest of transparency, I should, uh, share that I am a current employee of the Guam Legislature. In fact, I do work for Senator Perez. But my testimony today is being provided purely in my capacity as the president of the Board of Directors of GAIN. And so thank you very much, Senator Terlaugh. Thank you, Senator Torres, and thank you, Senator Perez, for, for being here this morning. I first met Dr. Pomas about a little over three years ago. And at GAIN, we have a spainutated clinic. And we pride ourselves in holding very high standards at that clinic. We follow not only DA and local, uh, regulations, but we exceed them. And we, we, we try to stick to that very, very strictly. And I, what was very striking is that when Dr. Pomas came and began, uh, providing his services through our clinic, like many local and military vets do, um, he wanted to double check all of our procedures. He checked our paperwork. He ran scenarios through with our staff just to, to test them out. And I found that very reassuring that he never took anything for granted. He's a by-the-book person who follows the rules and checks to make sure that, you know, the backups are in place and that everything is, is run safely. And I think that, that that's something that we have found consistently in all of his actions over the years. He is a very ethical, by-the-book person that's fair and reasonable. And he's also takes a, takes a, a pride in being able to educate as well. In the surgery room, in veterinary medicine in, in general, it can be very, a very stressful environment. And when conducting surgeries, our staff have said consistently that he's a very calming presence and he takes a leadership role. And he's also able to teach as well as perform the surgeries. And so in, in many of these, these different, um, examples, he's consistently demonstrated a, a level, a caliber of expertise that is very, uh, very notable. And I think that we're, we're very lucky that, that he is on Guam and that he's offering to make his, uh, to serve on the board. Over the years, he's also been extremely generous with both his time and his, and his energy. Whenever we've had questions at the shelter in general, it could be anything from veterinary medicine to just general practice type questions, he's been available. I can give him a call and he'll take the time out of his day to be able to walk me through, uh, questions and concerns I have. And that's sort of the attitude that, that we need in public service, that we need on a board. Uh, he's a very approachable person. Uh, again, he's very reasonable and it, he's just a, a presence that I think is very valuable to have in any team environment. And so, um, and given the position that he has now, it's, this federal position is, is one that is, uh, requires extremely advanced expertise, uh, advanced certifications. And I think it's reassuring that, that he meets those standards and he's, uh, that he meets those standards and is also willing to devote his time to Guam. So I thank the governor for making such a strong selection for the board. I thank Senator Terlaugh for chairing today's meeting and receiving testimony. And I thank Dr. Pomas, I thank Dr. Pomas for making Guam his home and offering to serve the people of Guam. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lur, also for your work with GAIN. And I've seen a lot of progress with GAIN, uh, over the recent years, so I want to thank you for that. You're doing a huge service for our entire community. Um, Mr. Dr., oh, Ms. Vanessa Oshiro?
Good morning, honorable senators. For the record, my name is Dr. Vanessa Oshiro and I am the owner and operator of Mariana's Vet Care in Baragato, Guam. I'm here this morning to support the nomination of Dr. Paul Pomas to the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners. I've been acquainted with Dr. Pomas in a professional capacity since March of 2016, when he covered my hospital in my absence. He had originally come out to Guam to do relief work for Isla Veterinary Hospital and enjoyed the island enough to extend his work in the community. Though I had not brought Dr. Pomas out to Guam myself, I found him to be as professional and courteous as any other veterinarian I could hope to entrust my patient's care to. And ultimately, I believe my clients felt the same way. This was evident in his case handling and follow-through, both at the level of his interaction with me as a fellow doctor and with the pet owners he helped, who later often complied with his medical recommendations and commended his service as well. It can be a wonder to find professionals as committed as I have found Dr. Pomas to be, but I'm glad to have been allowed some insight as to what motivates him particularly. He once told me about his disabled son, who despite his physical limitations since birth, insisted on getting himself into college and independently plowing through all that comes with it entirely without complaint. No surprise then, that when that young man succumbed to complications of his condition unexpectedly, Dr. Pomas would carry on in his example. If we have to lose our loved ones too soon in this life, it is a real comfort to know that the seeds they plant in us in their passing can take such deep root and yield such good fruit. Even now, in his current bid for a place on the GBAHE board, I believe that is what drives Dr. Pomas. I'm hard-pressed to imagine any better candidate for this reason and wholeheartedly support his nomination. Thank you for your audience.
Thank you, Dr. Oshiro. I like the way you put that. Are you, are we able to get a copy of your testimony as well?
Yes.
Sisus Masi.
Thank you.
And Dr. Po?
Uh, good morning, senators. Uh, my name is Dr. Robert Hildeth. I'm a veterinarian working here on Guam. Um, I began, uh, my career in veterinary medicine over four decades ago. I graduated first from UC Berkeley, then UC Davis. For the past 26 years, I've been a licensed veterinarian in good standing in California and here in Guam. I've worked for 23 years as an emergency veterinarian, a practice associate and practice owner, before moving here to Guam two and a half years ago. Spent time working in two private clinics here in Guam and also at Anderson Air Force Base Clinic. I have my own practice now doing house calls. A bit of a unique thing here on Guam. Uh, I've long been a proud member of the veterinary profession, known for its exceptional ethics and high moral standards. When I've come to Guam, I've not, become to know that pets have become important members of the families here on Guam and all over the world. Dogs and cats are a great source of pride for many owners and offer support to their families even in the roughest of times. As such, these families depend on the veterinary community to keep their pets healthy and live long lives. Unfortunately, some in the veterinary community do not live up to this responsibility and in my opinion, have dishonored the trust of the people. This dishon, this dis, excuse me, this dishonor cast a shadow over the entire veterinary community, even those who perform their duties admirably. Veterinary medicine here on Guam has been in a state of turmoil for some years. Veterinary medicine here on Guam is substandard to much of the Western worlds, some of which is due to lack of resource, but much is due to the climate of conflict and turmoil within the profession here. While it is common on the mainland for clinics to share information and provide detailed medical records about a particular patient, the cooperation among veterinarians here in Guam is almost non-existent. This often results in patients, this often prevents patients from getting the care that they need in a timely manner and often results in repeated testing, leading to increased costs and being placed on the pet owner's families. Guam, quite frankly, deserves better than this. Many pet families would like to file complaints, but do not do so because they believe their complaints will fall on deaf ears and nothing will be done about it. There is a continuous stream of discontent amongst veterinary consumers that feel frustrated, feel taken advantage of and feel unable to protect their pets from incompetent or unscrupulous care. We must change that perception. We must enforce our laws in order to reestablish the credibility of the veterinary profession here in Guam. The allied health board has been honest, fair and absolutely diligent about trying to address these complaints. I've witnessed myself their hard-working attempts to address these issues, but their hands have been tied by not having a veterinarian on the board to help review in detail the complaints that have been filed. Today, we're hearing testimony regarding the nominee to the allied health board, Dr. Paul Pomas. I'm here to put forth my strong and unshakable support for his nomination to the board. I believe many of the other veterinary professionals are here to support him and to impress upon you the importance of having a veterinarian on the board, and in particular, Dr. Pomas. Dr. Pomas has spent many years as a relief veterinarian for hospitals when their own doctors were out sick or on vacation. The value of this is that Dr. Pomas has seen how a vast number of different clinics operate, which gives him a great understanding of the acceptable standards of veterinary medicine. In his role as a relief veterinarian, Dr. Pomas has had to quickly analyze veterinary operations and work within that individual practice's culture. This is invaluable experience when it comes to being a board member. He has been personal, personal witness to the general standards of care at dozens of clinics, clinics and can compare those widely-held standards to those here on Guam. I have known Dr. Pomas for several years and have found him to be an honest individual. I've discussed many cases with him and while we don't always agree, I have found him to be thoughtful, insightful and honest in those discussions, weighing the many options of treatments and their potential for success or failure. He has made helpful suggestions that provide insight from his unique experiences as a relief veterinarian. But he too has been open to suggestions to keep in an open mind, a vital characteristic of anyone in the medical field. But most importantly, Dr. Pomas has always and unwaveringly dedicated himself to putting the care of the patient first and foremost. Furthermore, Dr. Pomas is independent of any veterinary business on Guam and by virtue, by virtue of his employment with the USDA. Familiarity with government processes in general come with a job. And as Dr. Pomas has been a regular attending to the allied health, uh, public meetings and is aware of the issues the board is currently facing, he will quickly become a useful contributor to the board. Again, Dr. Pomas has the years of experience, the breadth of knowledge, the proper perspective and the willingness to participate that would make him a great addition to the allied health board. Dr. Pomas' appointment to the allied health board is a very important first step towards improving pet care, uh, for the pets and their families here on Guam. It is a huge step forward in getting the veterinary community to be held accountable for their actions. This will in turn serve to bring back the confidence in the government of Guam by the pet-owning public. The second step is for the government of Guam to provide funding to investigate and if necessary prosecute. Veterinarians need to be held accountable just as any other medical professional. To date, however, the, this critical funding has been held up by a tactical matter that has delayed several cases before the board. The government of Guam needs to quickly remedy this matter. Again, I want to give my full support to the nomination of Dr. Paul Pomas for the allied health board. Dr. Pomas do, will do much to bring accountability to the veterinary community. I hope that the senators will see in him what I see in him and vote unanimously to appoint him to the allied health board. I want to thank you for your time today and your thoughtful consideration of this very important milestone for veterinary medicine here on Guam.
We have listed as one of the supporters, Sisusso is, is that person here to testify?
Sisuko.
Yes, Sisuko. Do you care to testify or you're just going to do some written? All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else that's, would like to testify before the panel? Okay. If not, uh, may I ask Dr. Po, if you'd like to, Pomas, I'm sorry.
Pomas.
Po, you just finished. Thank you very much, Dr. Pomas, if you'd like to offer some testimony.
Thank you, thank you, senators, for your time and consideration here today. Uh, I have been a veterinarian for the last 12 years. I'm licensed in five jurisdictions, including Guam. Um, I practice outside of Guam, is now limited because of my focus on my USDA job. But it was, uh, relief veterinary work that brought me here and it's been a, a feature of my life since graduation, that it was the best suited for me to pick my schedule, pick my hours, pick my place of business and clinic. of business and clinic and measure up to the standards I thought it should be, that I needed to continue working there. I could move on to another place, and after a while, I had a fairly stable set of clients who practiced high-quality medicine and were a delightful place to work. I found that when I came to Guam, the environment, the ocean, the culture, and the clinics I had a chance to work at. Dr. Oshiro's and Dr. Silk's were both exemplary clinics. As a relief veterinarian, I've been exposed to hundreds of clinics, I would say, over the last 12 years. When the recession of 2008, 2009 came across, I applied to Virginia and Maryland, licensed there, and went way across the country to see how they do things there, and it turns out about the same as we do in California. The problem with the Guam Board at this time is the lack of funding for prosecuting and investigating complaints. Complaints come in, they are referred to the committee or an attorney for investigation who is not veterinary-trained, and that leaves people in limbo. And so I would like to offer my services in that regard to move forward the regulation and the making veterinary medicine on this island a more respected profession. I look around and see my colleagues who have recommended me, and actually, I'm very flattered. I didn't know I was, I had such a halo, but I guess I must have maintained it somehow. I'm here to answer any questions and to have covered everything I wanted to say.
I have a question for you, Dr. Pumas. Can you give us a general idea of the significance of care for animals on Guam, not only healthcare, but the population of animals on Guam that would be serviced by veterinary medicine?
There's two populations, one very small, one very large. The very small one are the animals that are kept in good care. They're not, let me enlarge on that. That's three categories. There's the indoor pets, the ones that are traditional pets, has been come to been known for many peoples. They're part of the family. They live inside. They provide companionship and are generally are considered part of the family. Then there's a second category, much larger, of outdoor pets. They're just kept in the yard, very little social interaction, oftentimes tied up. And the very large population of animals that run free. Sometimes they have a collar on, somebody feeds them, but they're the ones who are sleeping in the street and laying under parked cars at payless.
And this is dogs, dogs and cats, Mosi?
By and large, dogs. Cats keep a much lower profile. You see them, and they're thin and scrawny, and they're not doing as well here as I see in other places. More competition for food, and the chickens are meaner, I think. The meaning of veterinary care for the first population is like it is everywhere. We will provide vaccines and health matters, advice on husbandry, how to prolong their lifetimes, advice on diet, weight control, skin issues. Those are two big things for animals on Guam is allergies, skin issues, parasites, parasites killed. If we didn't have certain diseases, the actual dog problem on the island would be far worse. Without hookworms, parvone, and heartworm, we could probably have doubled the population that we do now. There's nothing that's going to address the last problem without some serious consideration of population control measures. There's just too many. I don't think we can spay neuter our way out of that, out of that problem. We can give it a good try, and perhaps there are some technologies that can come along to make it easier and faster, but if I have to control an animal's reproductive capability by doing abdominal surgery, that limits just how far and how well we can handle it. Did that answer your question, Senator? I know it's rambling.
No, it does answer my question. The reason I ask it is, is oftentimes, we overlook the relationship and the interaction between, between pets or animals and humans and how the necessity to regulate both ultimately determines how our quality of life is affected, not only in terms of emotional companionship, service animals, but also the destructive nature of the feral animal population and safety on the community, and how, I think, if we're talking about allied health, we can't address just human care or healthcare without recognizing the impact of the lack of care for animals who live, you know, alongside us.
Who deserve better.
Would serve, yeah. So I, that's why I want to ask just how broad that is, and I think that your mention of the larger category, which is the category of the feral animals who are breeding uncontrolled and, you know, succumbing to diseases, not necessarily transmitted to humans, but diseases that just make, you know, their existence in our community less than desirable, I think needs to be addressed. So I certainly appreciate the support that's been lent to you today and also just for broadening our horizons on veterinary care and how that's an important component of healthcare on Guam generally.
I also look forward to working with the senators on other issues that are related to veterinary care and the veterinary profession as they come up.
But I would also be curious what your, you were talking about investigation and prosecution, how that's lacking, how it's not funded. Is currently the Attorney General's Office the default for any matters that are referred from the Allied Health Board?
I'll read from my written testimony on that board. In a letter dated 14 May 2015, then Attorney General Elizabeth Barrett Anderson wrote to the Guam Board of Allied Health, stating and quoting, "I have determined, however, that our role heretofore cannot and shall not extend to the investigation or prosecution of disciplinary complaints before the Allied Health Board." So with that one letter, she cut off our prosecutorial ability and without replacement funding for the board to hire outside counsel or have one made our full-time counsel. They have been lacking in prosecution. Some of the latest, most recent prosecutions have been overturned in court, not for any violation, not for any mistakes in the evidence that showed errors in judgment, errors in practice, but rather open meeting law violations. The newspaper failed to publish the agenda, the announcement on time in the paper like they said they would, and with that, the whole prosecution went out the window.
Sorry to hear that. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Senator Perez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Pumas, for being here and for accepting the nomination. Just wanted to ask you, what are some of the initiatives in serving on the board, what's some of the initiatives that you will take on, in addition to looking, maybe re-initiating the, maybe Attorney General's Office, or having them relook at providing some service?
I actually cornered the current AG on an airline flight from Saipan, and he danced around the issue very nicely, but he wasn't prepared, so I can't blame him for that. I had hoped to hear back from him since then about the resolution of this issue, and I think his plate's just been very, very full. As far as initiatives, I would like to bring to some degree back the collegiality among the profession that I see everywhere else. We've, as practitioners, have learned to be very defensive in our practice because other veterinarians have not been hesitant to throw the first veterinarian under the bus, saying that inadequate care, they didn't do this test, they misinterpreted it wrong, they didn't find this problem. And that has to stop. So I'd like to initiate independently my board membership, some sort of like journal club, some way of bringing the veterinarians together to talk about things rather than be so defensive with each other. But there are certain bad actors on this island that have promoted this defensive attitude. It's not without reason that it's there, and so that's one of the things that has to be dealt with in time as well. Continuing education is also an issue for veterinarians. We don't get paid the big bucks like the medical doctors do, and the Guam Board has been very generous in allowing us to get CE credit for a number of things like online education, but providing some sort of local CE would help a great deal for us to meet our obligations, and I think that can be done by possibly recruiting a speaker to come in and share the costs among the other veterinarians that there is interest. The management of the profession can be dealt with to some degree by the board, but a lot of it has to be dealt with by the veterinarians themselves. There's no other way around it. You can only use a club so much, then you have to get out your carrots.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, senators. Thank you to Dr. Po again. And so, Dr. Pumas, again, thank you for accepting this nomination and for all your work. You are both correct. There are issues that have been brought up regarding Guam Allied Health Board, that they've been very delayed in their prosecution or following through on complaints that have been made to the board, and there, it's been explained to me, because I also have oversight of these boards, that, yeah, it stems from a change in the policy of the Attorney General's Office as to who's going to investigate, who's going to prosecute. Now, we have, so, but my understanding is that with the appointment of a veterinary member, we are going to be able to proceed with cases involving veterinarians with the use of fees that have been paid by the various allied health boards, I mean, members to, or professions, sorry, to this board, that we are going to ensure that the revolving fund operates as it's supposed to, and so that you have access to those fees for use in your investigations, prosecutions, and to hire a hearing officer. And of course, I'd like to continue to work with the Attorney General to see which of those they can provide in addition to the resource, the attorney that they're providing for board advice at board meetings, but I think, I'm hoping that they can provide at least one of these others so that it's not all at cost to the boards. But you're not alone that this board, all the boards have this issue. They all need to step up in their investigations and their prosecutions. They are our only protection, really, against malpractice, you know, our first line of that kind of protection to ensure that the practice is proceeding as, as it's supposed to, that people are getting the continuing education that's required, and that, you know, our standards are what the community is entitled to. So it's a big amount of work. I just have two questions for you. You do run a private business for Refriends Veterinary Service?
Yes, and I wanted to enlarge on that a little bit. I have made a very small income from that, but it wasn't doing euthanases, even though that's what I set up the business to do. It turns out that all that income was made writing health certificates for travel, for animals to get on an airplane and go somewhere, because the CSR fee was raised to such a high level that it became an unaffordable expense for the amount of income I expected to derive from the business. The controlled substances registration fee is now $500 a year, which is two and a half times the, more than any other state in the, in the Union. And normally, of the 23 states that do have their own registration requirements, the average fee is $85. And I've queried the public health to find out what the justification for such a high increase was. Where does the money go? Other states run their controlled substances programs with far less, and it's really put a crimp on the small practitioners to pay that $500 year after year. A one-time fee would, with some sort of reduced recurring fee, would be acceptable, but $500 year after year is just a lot for many practitioners.
All right, I appreciate that. I expect that there's a lot of topic we could go on for veterinary field by itself. Unfortunately, I'm pressed for time this morning, but I do just want to ensure that, so we have a practicing veterinarian who is serving on the board to, that oversees and licenses all veterinarians, and this is the same with all of the other health professions, so this is not unique, but it is, we're, we're kind of monitoring ourselves, right? The legal profession does the same. But I just want to ask you for the record, do you ensure, do you foresee any conflicts in this regard? Where you are one practicing, you know, veterinarian, there are others, those are your competition, perhaps. You also have a court dispute with one of them. I mean, are you going to be able to do your work on the board without any conflicts or with fairness?
I believe so. The experience I had with the clinics and working with them, in them, plus the fact that I am now a federally-employed food safety veterinarian, I have no ties to any one practice, and as far as my court case, I feel I was, I had a fair hearing. I lost. Life goes on.
All right, okay. Again, I thank you all, and we will address some of the other concerns that you've brought up in a separate hearing or some separate way. But again, I want to thank you, Dr. Pumas, for accepting, accepting this appointment, this nomination.
And I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Any additional testimony in regards to the nomination of Dr. Paul Pumas may be submitted to our office or to, through email to senators at turlahigwam@gmail.com. We're going to proceed now with the nomination of Nicole A. Calvo to the Guam Historic Preservation Board. If those who have signed up to testify could have a seat, and Ms. Calvo could also have a seat. We also have this morning the nomination of Dr. Atianza, and I suspect some of these are going to be similar testimony, but we'll, we'll just, I don't know, let's see. How many are, how many are here to testify for, for Ms. Calvo? Please have a seat. All right. All right, so we're here to consider the appointment of Nicole A. Calvo as a Chamorro cultural alternative to the Guam Historic Preservation Member, an alternative member. I'd like to, for the record, we've received written testimony in support of Ms. Calvo's appointment from Ms. Eileen Menno from Sinan Baylen Chamorro, Susan White, American Indian Professional Services, Frankie Elitika, interim president, Northern Marianas College, John A. Hugheli, editor and book producer, David Lottz, Guam Historic Preservation Review Board, Stephen Perez, Dominica M. Tolentino, director of the Guam Museum, James Perez, Dr. James Perez-Viernes, outreach director and core faculty center for Pacific Island Studies. Those have we received in advance. And so we could proceed with those who've signed up. Mr. Kenata, and I want to apologize. I know that the Guam Preservation Trust and the Guam Historic, the Review Board has a huge conference this, the last few days, and that they've been hosting many from different places in our region, different islands, even American Samoa, as far as that. And so I apologize for the timing of this hearing. I was not aware of the timing of that conference, and so otherwise, I would have avoided pulling you out.
It's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Kenata. Please proceed.
Thank you, Senator. Good morning, Senator Turlahy and Senator Flores. My name is Joe Kenata. I'm the chief program officer for the Guam Preservation Trust, and I'd like to read the testimony from the Guam Preservation Trust. On behalf of the Guam Preservation Trust Board of Directors and Staff, I write to express our strong support for Ms. Nicole A. Calvo to serve as a Chamorro cultural alternate on the Board of Directors, Guam Historic Preservation Review Board. Nicole is no stranger to preservation community. In her capacity, she is the development and marketing manager for Pacific Historic Parks, whom GPT partners with on many of our shared preservation projects. Nicole also worked for the Guam Preservation Trust for a few years and played an important role in conducting outreach for GPT with various cultural organizations in Guam. Nicole has a history of writing successful federal grants, of which she brought to the Guam Preservation Trust. Her teamwork approach and writing skills assisted us to submit a grant project that ultimately was awarded over $100,000 from the Office of Insular Affairs of the U.S. Department of Interior to conduct various preservation trainings and a summit. Afterwards, Nicole stayed connected with the preservation community, working as the administrator for the Guam Museum and launching the first-ever COSAS camp, which GPT was a prime sponsor. She has passion, zeal, and a voice that our community needs to advocate for the advancement of historic preservation. Nicole was a pleasure to work with, and I am happy that she decided to accept the public call to continue serving our community as a member of the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board. With our island community seeing an increase in the value that that preservation provides to our communities, it is necessary that the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board maintain the capacity harmonizing Guam's Chamorro culture perspective together with the preservation laws and regulations. And I am confident that Nicole will work well with the Guam Historic Resource Division and our office to ensure protection of Chamorro culture, cultural resources relative to historic preservation in our community that remain a priority. As you are well, as you are all well aware, the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board members in turn become the Board of Directors of the Guam Preservation Trust. And a complete board allows for better management of our work to advance historic preservation in our community. It is in this regard that I once again extend Guam Preservation Trust's strongest support for Ms. Calvo to the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board and respectfully request that you and your colleagues confirm her to begin the great work needed to accomplish the mandates of both GHPRDB and GPT." Thank you. Sisus maasi.
Sisus maasi, Mr. Kenata. Ms. Zani? Zina?
Hafadee, senoras. I'm actually here representing two entities. One is Para i Probetu ni Tautauta Incorporated, nonprofit organization, and also i Tribal Council in Enonimi and Fafanaugu in Bai Lantamoru. So, I'd like to express two, two letters and two representations. Hafadee, this letter is in support of Ms. Nicole Calvo's appointment to Guam Historic Preservation Review Board. Nicole is a grant writer who puts great care and careful thought before implementing her project ideas. Intergenerational projects, conducting surveys, developing data, and producing resource materials, which still benefit Guam Department of Education, most especially the Department of Chamorro Studies, are still just a few projects that Nicole has completed. I've had the privilege to work with Nicole, literally sitting right across from her. She is a professional who is well aware of her island surroundings and its people. I'm confident to say that as a Chamorro woman, guida, hatungo respetu, inafa maule, janinadahi, qualities that will contribute greatly to the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board. Sana maasi, Guahu si Zina Ruiz, Executive Director, Para i Probetu ni Tautauta Inc., also known as Pipet. I'm also representing Enonimi and Fafanaugu in Bai Lantamoru, the Tribal Council encompassing Fafanaugu of the different guma cultural dance houses of Guam. Hafadee, hami i man Fafanaugu in Bai Lantamoru, engof supotii i hinalum sisenore Nicole Calvo para i Guam Historic Preservation Review Board. Ti uno ha nabiahi na man hami matotu jan sisenore Nicole. Menhalum itenongonha, jan megai i ekspedanshania pudilina la i tautautano jan itenotaguan. Dangin makri bi i hinalumnia guine na estau, sempre mas finu jan fitmi itetu i Guam Historic Preservation Review Board. Sana maasi, i man Fafanaugu ginin i guma erenshan tautautano, guma rason atulati, guma aniti ni tautautano, guma kenalamti ni tautautano, guma ninain atulati, guma inina ni sainata, guma tautautano, jan guma tautautano. Sana maasi.
Sana maasi. Please proceed.
Hafadee, zantiro. My name is Frankie Elitika. I am the interim president of Northern Marianas College in the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands. I am also the immediate past chair of the Northern Marianas Humanities Council, and I am here to provide testimony in support of Ms. Nicole Calvo's nomination to serve on the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board. I submitted written comments earlier, but I thought it was important that I come in person to this honorable committee to stress my support. I met Ms. Calvo more than a year ago at Northern Marianas College when she was in the Commonwealth exploring partnership opportunities for the Pacific Historic Parks Organization. In the short amount that I have known her, I've become impressed and even inspired by Ms. Calvo's passion for preserving historic resources in a way that is pragmatic and that advances knowledge and curiosity about all places, people, and events about the Marianas. I have also several, I have had, I have also had several opportunities where I have leaned on her extensive experience in several local nonprofit agencies, her professional network that extends beyond the shores of Guam, and her knack for making history and historic preservation relatable and to different, relatable to different audiences. Ms. Calvo's commitment to public service, coupled with her strong advocacy for the preservation of history, make her an ideal candidate for the Guam Preservation Review Board. I am confident she will carry out her responsibilities with the leadership and responsible stewardship that the people of Guam expect from the board. I am mindful of your time, so I will keep my testimony brief and succinct. But if you need more information, I'm here for the rest of the day. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak to you this morning.
Thank you very much, Mr. Elitika, for coming all the way over here to provide your testimony. I very much appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Lohan?
Hafadee, my name is Victor Lohan. In hearing Nicole's nomination, I've actually known Nicole most of my life and her family. A big fan of all of them, not to diss anybody else of her family, I'm a big fan of Nicole's, her in particular. And I've had, been blessed with the opportunity to work with her. Knowing her personally is one thing, but when I worked with her for several years and assisting with her programs, I've learned, it's just empowered and inspired me more so on how and what to do and be diligent, and just never stop, be really, be really exacting. I mean, she's all these, she's used all these qualities. I, like I said, I was going to write something out, but I just felt to submit an oral testimony. I can't really say enough about her. You can read her resume, it goes on and on and on. The impacts in the communities of some of the programs, particularly, I can think of at least six, if not seven, grants are truly measurable in terms of her own personal work for community hours, effectuating others, and particularly inspiring me. And I'd like to especially impart that what she has done for me has inspired me to impart that upon others. So, I really think the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board, she would be an immeasurable asset. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lohan. I also want to acknowledge that Ms. Calvo's family is all here. I see them, and thank you for waiting. And also, the chairperson of the current Historic Preservation Review Board and the Guam Preservation Trust is here, Mr. Mike McKeel and other members. So, sisus maasi. Okay, so, Ms. Calvo, please proceed.
Hafadee, Madam Chairwoman, and esteemed members of the Committee on Health, Tourism, Historic Preservation, Land and Justice. Guahu si Nicole Calvo, hagen nativity dot costru Calvo, jan itatahu difunto Felix V. Artero Calvo Jr. dispense hadzo, sakalan aplinkamantuski fina zamoro. So, for the sake of not being misunderstood, I regrettably continue in English. Thus, it is with sincere humility that I request your consent to my appointment representing the Chamorro Culture Discipline to the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board and by virtue of this board, the Guam Preservation Trust Board as well. As a child of the '70s in Guam, the emphasis on being Chamorro was not something that was talked about or heard of. There were no Chamorro dance and chant groups. There was no such thing as Chamorro summer camps or Chamorro immersion programs. There weren't Chamorro adornments and jewelry. And at school, we celebrated Chamorro week and not month in March. We can certainly have long discourses about whether this was the beginning of the demise of our Chamorro heritage, or rather, was it not emphasized because we simply were Chamorro and lived it each day? Today, as a child in my 40s living on the island, expressions of Chamorro culture are prevalently seen with such fervor and intensity by the young and old alike. We see it in our classrooms and schools, our retail stores, in this legislature, our government agencies, our various economic sectors, and even overseas. We see it being lived out in our families when we come together for special occasions. We see it when a community comes together to share what they have from the harvest of Guam's land and sea. We see it in times of joy and pain. And in its most simplistic manner, we express it in a greeting, embracing a true sense of camaraderie and goodwill. Culture broadly defined as a community's way of life that we pass on to the next generation. If historic preservation is about understanding the past by preserving historic sites for future generations, I strongly feel that the Chamorro culture perspective is necessary to be brought into these discussions for three reasons. First, Chamorro is our island's indigenous culture and is unique only to Guam and the Marianas. Chamorro culture is Guam's inherent and innate culture. Some of its basic tenants include the importance of family, respect of elders, the warm hospitality extended toward all, and our resilience in the face of calamity, both natural and man-made. We believe in the importance of respect for our land, oceans, and the resources we have to work together for the betterment of the community. We teach the language in our schools, listen and dance to its music, and stand around a barbecue pit to reconnect with one another. This is our way of life on Guam, and the continued retention of our cultural values will only raise the quality of life for all of us. Second, Chamorro culture is inclusive of others and their perspective as seen in our history, which has evolved to include the influences of people who have come to call Guam home. We know through historical research that there were various migrations of people who came to Guam and the Marianas. We believe that they brought and influenced the use of the latticestone, pottery, and pelagic and agricultural implements. This primary culture, although forcibly matriculated by at least three colonizers, also persevered in order to survive and adopted from these outside forces the best of what they had, Spanish and Mexican flavors to our cuisine, Roman Catholic traditions, especially during Christmas with an aben and nenu, as well as Pacific Island, Asian, and Western touches and values. While there will always be an initial conflict or clash between cultures and civilizations, we are fortunate that our Chamorro way of life is open to embrace and continue practicing what we find most important for ourselves and those we welcome. Third, Chamorro culture is what will unite us as a people in the future. How will we be written 100, 200, or 500 years from now? Our future will be shaped by how we continue to practice our customs today, what we document, preserve, and restore. And by having our diversified populace, all those who call Guam home, continue to embrace, learn, and live our basic Chamorro values. So that in the future, when we in this legislative hall have passed away and the future Chamoros see historic places of our past, they can relate to the stories and histories passed on to them, that our songs, our chants, our prayers, and our dances mean something to them, and that our language, cultural traditions, and customs are still practiced and wholeheartedly embraced. This is the importance of historic and cultural preservation today for the Chamorro of tomorrow. Madam Chairwoman and fellow members of this committee, I am honored to represent and advocate for the Chamorro Culture Discipline. It is our Chamorro culture, language, and history that I have humbly tried to advance by helping our community through my outreach with various Chamorro cultural groups and organizations these past 25 years of my life. From my early days as an English and social studies teacher to my work with Pa'atatautano, the Guam Preservation Trust, the Senator Antonio M. Palomo Guam Museum and Chamorro Educational Facility, Para i Probetu ni Tautauta, Mihi, and currently at Pacific Historic Parks, I have worked to help our people build the capacity to preserve and perpetuate Chamorro language, history, and culture. All three of these elements are fundamentally intertwined and intimate because without one, the others would meagerly exist. Ultimately, what I am espousing will be a win-win situation for all of us. As an island with limited resources and tourism, our most viable private industry, any improvements to our visitor commerce would enable us to remain competitive as a desirable tourist destination. This world inevitably enhance, this would, I'm sorry, inevitably enhance and perpetuate the uniqueness of our island with its rich cultural heritage. It is my unmitigated desire to work with the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board and the Guam Preservation Trust to advance historic preservation, which must be inclusive and respectful of the Chamorro culture. In closing, and in the best interest of our island, it is incumbent upon us to actively promote both cultural and historic preservation, thus ensuring a clear sense of place and identity for the enjoyment of both island residents and visitors alike in the years and future generations to come. Sisus maasi.
Sisus maasi. Biba! I also want to recognize the presence of our Saina and Master of Dance, Chamorro Dance, Mr. Frank Rabon. Sisus maasi for being here. And are there any questions or comments? Senator Perez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank you, Nicole, for such an impassioned testimony. I think that in itself would inspire the rest of our community to really embrace this, this really important mission to preserve our culture and, you know, everything that, you know, that is needed to do that. So, I just have a question regarding, you know, on the board. What is your, what is your thoughts about mitigation?
Mitigation is a very interesting thing. I have worked with Guam Preservation Trust. I've taken essentials of Section 106. I have done all of that type of work, and I know that Senator Tulahi has also been in courses with us as well. It is a difficult thing. It's a, it's a balance that must happen. And I'm happy that on this board that we serve on, there are disciplines, and my being one discipline with the others on the board and their expertise, I think we could come to certain areas of mitigation that must be done. There has to be a balance between development and preservation, and I understand that tremendously. And so, I do not, I think with mitigation, it's talking with everyone on the board and also stakeholders to understand what needs to be done to move forward.
So, as you know, there's a lot of military projects going on, and that seems to be what the modus of how they operate. But considering the amount of damage that has been done to our island with our historical sites, is there a point that you believe where we just preserve and not mitigate?
I don't know if we ever come to a point that we can just purely preserve and not mitigate. And if I think of the way the Guam Preservation Trust was established, and I think of Senator Bell Ariola, she was the woman who introduced this. And she said, "In order for there to be development, we must also have preservation." And that's why we, this trust came about. And I kind of see that foresight, and I think there's, I don't know, Senator. I can't answer that question very forthright. I think it takes a lot of, there's going to be a lot of thinking and discussions that must happen in order for us to just say, "No development at all and simply preservation." And I would be one person to really listen to everyone involved so that I make sure that the decisions that we make are enlightened decisions and informed ones for the benefit of the island.
Okay, and when it comes to burials, what is your position on burials?
I think that's one of the things that we must do. I was at the Guam Museum, and we have human remains there. And I know that we constantly harp on our Department of Defense. But in our own island, we have not reburied our human remains, and I think that's atrocious. It is an atrocity. I think it must be done. So, I also am looking to make sure that the naftani mani ala nata happened very quickly so that we can rebury those human remains that we have stored right now in the Guam Museum, which should not be there. I think that's one of the things that we, I would like to push forward with our Historic Preservation Review Board and to work with the Guam Preservation Trust, and of course, the government, to see how that can be done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. In follow-up with this Senator's question, I also just wanted to encourage, I guess, that before mitigation, the requirement by law is to avoid harm. And so, it is the duty of this Preservation Review Board, our ship And so it is the duty of this Preservation Review Board, our shipo, everyone, to avoid harm. And, and the statute is, then becomes vague. When harm cannot be avoided, then we mitigate. But I, I just want to urge everyone in our community that that is really our standard, it's to avoid that harm. And then it becomes, we're trusting you, the board members, their discretion. When is it not avoidable? Why is it not avoidable? Right? And so there's a lot of discretion there, so I, I appreciate that there's a very strong person like you to serve on this board. And I want to also recognize that we've received written testimony from Linda Titano Rages as well in support. All the testimony has been in support of your nomination, and thank you again for your, your words are very encouraging. Where, I just want to ask very quickly, I know that we have to reset our, back there, so, but you work currently for Pacific Historic Parks. Who is this? What is this entity? Is this a federal agency, a local entity, or a mix or what is that?
Pacific Historic Parks is a nonprofit organization that has been in existence for about 40 years. Thirty of those years have been in Guam. We work as a cooperative association with the National Park Service here in Guam, in Hawaii and in Saipan, in the San Amian. And really, our focus is on World War II and education and interpretation, preservation and restoration of World War II sites, also honoring the, the people who served in those sites, and of course, the, the local voice of the people that were in those different islands. And so that's kind of the work that we're doing here, and we've been here on Guam, like I said, for the last 30 years.
All right, thank you. And so that work and your nonprofit organization commitments, do you foresee any challenges as to conflict serving on this board?
I do not foresee conflict serving on the board, but if there was a conflict of interest, I will certainly disclose that conflict to the board members immediately and, but like I said, I don't foresee any conflict with that.
Okay, and I appreciate that you've worked at this, the Guam Preservation Trust, so you do understand what the role of the board is. I'm not going to belabor that, but again, I thank you for your commitment to and representation of, on this board, and, and there's a lot of work needs to be done. The board has done a lot of very, very good work that we can actually see today, but there's a lot of work that we need to do because we are at a very quick, the development is at a rapid pace right now, and they're, we have to ensure that, we are really relying on this board in a lot, in a, you are frontline in this regard, to ensure that we can preserve what we can, what, you know, we should preserve, and, and that we have a future, that in the future, those who follow us are going to see our efforts of, you know, in their identity and their practicing of the culture and their ability to do that, that it will not be lost. So again, Sisus Maasi. Sisus Maasi to all of you who testified, who all, all of you are here in support, and of course, most especially to Ms. Calvo for her commitment to preserving our culture. Sisus Maasi.
Hafadee, Sisus Maasi.
The hearings ended. All further testimony can be submitted to my office or to Senator Turlahe Guam at gmail dot com. Sisus Maasi.